Well, good evening Placerville. I'm Mayor Thomas. It is my pleasure to call to order the September 10th, 2013, regularly scheduled meeting of the Placerville City Council. And what a good-looking group we have here tonight.[34.47][34.47](APPLAUSE). It is a pleasure to welcome Modesto in the Placerville House. If you'd please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Chief Heller to lead us off, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Zito.
Councilmember Barelli.
Here.
Council-- Vice Mayor Hagan.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Thank you. And before we go on to Item Three, Announcements and Presentations to the Public, I'd like to take a few minutes of silence and remembrance for recognizing September 11th. This is not moments of silence and remembering the vicious tack on America, but it's a moment of remembrance for how we showed up as Americans that day to support our neighbor and defend the liberties that we so love. Please join me. And now on to Item Three, Announcements and Presentations to the Public. I would like to call Joanne Rogers and Roger Clemm up to the podium if Roger is in the house. And this is a very exciting designation that we just received on behalf of the city of Placerville, and I turn it over to you, Mr. Ravas.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just to let you know, Mr. Roger Clemm talked to me earlier today, and he will not be able to attend the meeting tonight.
Thank you. We have Joanne, that's all we need.[154.47][154.47](LAUGHING).
Well, I am so excited that the Preserve America program has been awarded to the city of Placerville. It was just such a perfect fit. The Historic Advisory Committee has been working on this since June of 2012, and it was a pleasure to work on it. And I would love to have everyone check out their websites so you can understand how it overlaps so many parts of the community and how it can be used. And it's-- the website to go to is www.preserveamerica.gov. And it has funding available to the communities for awards for the people that serve our community, the programs, educational or otherwise, and also for the places and the monuments. So it's a totally a win-win, and we should sometime soon see a sign by "Welcome to Placerville" that says it is a designated Preserve America city.
That's wonderful.[225.48][225.48](APPLAUSE). Mr. Ravas.
Well, thank you very much, Joanne, Madam Mayor. I'll go ahead and give a brief staff report on this item.
Please.
On February 12th of 2013, the city council authorized staff to submit an application to the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation for designation as a Preserve America community. The application was prepared by the city Historical Advisory Committee members, Joanne Rogers and Roger Clemm, and with the assistance of city staff. By letter dated July 11th, 2013, from the White House honorary Chair of the Preserve America Initiative, First Lady Michelle Obama announced the designation of Placerville as one of the nation's newest Preserve America communities. Since 2003, nearly 900 communities throughout the country have been designated as Preserve America communities. Preserve America is a federal initiative program that is administered by the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation and the U.S. Departments of the Interior in cooperation with the White House and the Executive Office of the President, the Departments of Agriculture, Commerce, and several other federal agencies. The program's purpose is to encourage and support local community efforts to preserve, promote, and enjoy their cultural and natural heritage. The program recognizes and designates municipalities, neighborhoods, and tribal communities with active historic preservation programs that use historic resources to promote heritage tourism and economic vitality. Placerville's application highlighted community support for the promoting of the city's heritage and its historic and cultural resources and fostering tourism. Examples include the locally-supported and community-sponsored activities such as Wagon Train, the Pony Express Re-Ride, and the citizen involvement in the operation of the Eldorado County History Museum, the Fountain and Tallman Museum, and the Goldbug Mine and Museum. The benefits of the Preserve America designation includes White House recognition, a certificate of recognition, a Preserve America community road sign, which I was hoping we would have the show tonight, but we haven't received it yet, eligibility for Preserve America grants, authorization to use a Preserve America logo on signs, flags, banners, and promotional materials, listing in a web-based Preserve America community directory, national and regional press releases, and enhanced community visibility and pride. Staff wishes to gratefully acknowledge the following individuals, civic groups, business associations, and heritage associations for their support and endorsements in this endeavor. Their letters of support were integral for supporting the city's Preserve America designation application, and these include Bill Robinson and Steve Yule for photographic images, the California Nevada Chapter of Oregon California Trails Association, the Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce, Friends of Snowshoe Thompson, the Heritage Association of Eldorado County, the National Pony Express Association, the Placerville Downtown Association, the Placerville Drive Business Association, the City of Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, and the State Office of Historic Preservation with the State Department of Parks and Recreation. So upon that, it is staff's recommendation on behalf of the people of Placerville, the proclamation by the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation designated the city of Placerville a Preserve America community. And with that, I will conclude staff's presentation and present the award, letter, and proclamation to the council and to the mayor to read into the record.[455.31][455.31](APPLAUSE). This is the letter from Michelle Obama from the White House, and this is the Preserve America designation.
Beautiful. Thank you. Beautiful.[476.12][476.12](APPLAUSE). And at this point, it is my privilege to read the letter that I received in my mailbox from our First Lady, Michelle Obama. And this I receive on behalf of the citizens of Placerville. Dear citizens of Placerville, congratulations on your designation as a Preserve America community, and thank you for all you do to enhance our nation's heritage. Your community holds a treasured place in the American story. Boy, do we. And it is through your vision and dedication that our history will be upheld and our future will be renewed. President Obama and I are proud of your community, and we applaud your achievement. The Americans who came before us built this country on the strength of their hopes, hard work, and perseverance. Now you are using those same qualities to share our history with today's Americans and those of tomorrow. By strengthening your community, you are strengthening our country. You are showing that each of us has a role to play in shaping a better future, and we can do it by honoring our past. Thank you again for all you do and for your continuing commitment to our nation's heritage and for your enthusiastic participation in the Preserve America program. I wish you all the best and have high hopes for your continued success. Sincerely, Michelle Obama.[553.72][553.72](APPLAUSE). And on behalf of the council, I'd like again to thank Joanne Rogers and Roger Clemm for spearheading the very intricate application process that led us to receiving this designation. Thank you for all your hard work. And now we move on to Item 3.2. This is another exciting project honoring our past as well, the Monument Garden Project. And I turn that over to you, Mr. Yule. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. What a great segue. Boy, do we have a project for Preserve America.
That's right.[595.66][595.66](LAUGHING).
We didn't plan that, but man, this is excellent. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Deb Power tonight, representing our Community Pride Committee, and she wants to fill us in. For those of you who are not familiar with the Monument Garden, or Community Pride for that matter, it's a local group made up of all volunteers who take pride in beautifying our community here locally. And our most recent project, which has been before city council about three times now, is to restore the garden that was once on the corner of Main Street and Broadway, right where our big Christmas tree is. And a lot of effort has gone into-- did I say Broadway? Bedford, I'm sorry. A lot of effort has gone into that design, and so we're through that part of the process. And now it's time to try to implement that plan. So Deb's going to fill us in on our latest fundraising effort.
All right. It is perfect timing. So for the Monument Garden, just to give you a little bit of background to refresh your memory, in December, we did the public scoping, and we got input for ideas from the community. In February, we came back with the new designs and had incorporated all of that input. So now what we want to do is we want to start-- begin implementing those goals. Some of the selected features included things such as providing for public spaces, which would include seating areas and benches, the raised planter beds, and in-ground lighting. We also wanted to protect-- have it be sustainable and also environmentally friendly. So we have provided for permeable paving stones, low-water-use planting and vegetation. And then, of course, last but not least, is the historical perspective. We want to get the bell back, which, you know, had to be removed for widening of Bedford. We wanted to-- we want to also preserve the Judge Mall Memorial. And most importantly, we want to return the Vietnam Memorial Plaque back to Main Street. They were underneath the street trees. Some of them got lost and moved, and in fact, if you look back here, some of them are still in the window. So this will be a great venue for us to put those plaques back on Main Street. Our capital campaign is going to start today. In fact, we have a couple of fundraising strategies. The first thing is that you got a brochure on your water bill, so it should come out today or tomorrow. And we want to encourage donations from the public, no matter how large or small. We will recognize our donors. All the donors will be recognized in the City of Placerville Activity Guide. Donors who contribute over $1,000 or more will be recognized with a plaque at Town Hall. We also have another publicity method, and that is we're planning on putting an onsite sign. And in that sign, we want to have the typical thermometer that would help us to monitor our progress for raising our funds, and then also give us the-- to show how those funds are going to be used. And most of that is already in your brochure, so it would include things like restoring the Vietnam Memorial, reinstalling the historical bell, the benches for public access, planter boxes, and lighting. So did you have-- would you-- do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Deb. Is there any questions at this point for Community Pride? Thank you for all your efforts on behalf of our community on this very, very important community asset. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to supporting the project.
Thank you. It's a great group, I have to say.
You do have a great group. Very dedicated to making our city beautiful.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.[838.32][838.32](APPLAUSE).
Do we have brochures in the back? So we have extras of them.
Wonderful. There are brochures in the back if anyone else would like to take a look at that and support the project. It would be much appreciated. All right. And with that, are we-- is it time for another Fall Community Cleanup Day? My goodness, how time flies. Ms. Zito.
This twice-a-year event that the city sponsors is provided jointly between the city of Placerville and Eldorado Disposal. It's staffed by volunteer city employees, possibly some Kiwanis members this year. We're checking into that. But it's a great community service. We actually get tonnage reports about how much debris, garbage, green waste is deposited that day, and it is in the tons. Hundreds of cars. This particular event in the fall is in our utility bill, so we expect it to be a large event. It'll be Saturday morning, September 28th, starts at 8:00 a.m. Cars are usually lined up when I arrive at 6:00. And they make as many trips as possible that they can get through that line between 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. So it's a great community event. The community is very appreciative of it. It's a real positive thing. Vice Mayor Hagan has worked the event before, too. And 99.9% of the folks are just very appreciative that the city holds this event. So September 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Mosquito Park and Bus Facility on Mosquito Road.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor Hagan, for supporting that, and thank all of our city staff. We have many, many members of our city staff who take their Saturday on behalf of helping the community clean out their closets, so it's very, very much appreciated. Thank you. And we have one more announcement to the public that is not on our agenda. We have a very dynamic group in the audience here on support of this event. So with that, I'd like to call Pat up to the podium and share with us what's going on.[968.36][968.36](APPLAUSE).
Madam Mayor, Placerville council, staff. Am I in it?
You are.
Thank you, guys, very much. Carol told me everybody was going to be wearing a leather jacket.[985.63][985.63](LAUGHING).
It was too hot.
There goes my notes. I pushed the wrong thing on there. Anyway, what I am is the co-founder and coordinator for Casey's Ride for Hope, and some of you have heard of it, and I guess there's some people behind me here that have heard of it, too. We raise funds locally for the Center for Violence-Free Relationships, which used to be called the Women's Center. There was a tragedy in my life in 2006. I lost my sister due to domestic violence right here in town. And I commend the Placerville Police Department, too, for the apprehension of the criminal. It was like they caught him in Owens Valley. You know, Mike Scott, Kim Knight, I know were involved deeply. So once again, thanks, man. I know that guy is sleeping comfortably for the rest of his life. So that's how we created this event. It tugged my heart, and me being a motorcyclist and knowing about bike runs and how the biker community, motorcyclist community gets together and raises-- yeah, this mic is too short. It raises-- many groups raise funds for all kinds of organizations, and I chose domestic violence, and it was really a tough one at first. It was like when I was walking around, it was like handing people a hot potato. They didn't want to look at it. And then since we've started in '06, it's no longer as the way I see it, a hot potato in our community. So I want to thank you guys, the council, Mayor, Placerville Police, PDA, everyone involved, the city employees here that have supported me from the beginning and let us do our event downtown, because that downtown event is such a draw to have, because we like to show off our bikes. It brings them down, it parks them down there. It helps us a lot, and I don't know, with your guys' help and everybody's help that has joined, since we started, over $100,000 we've given to the center. But that's just a dollar figure. Every year, there's somebody, some man or a woman, that finds the center and moves forward with something to repair their family, maybe to reconstruct their family, or ultimately maybe go the other direction, you know, so that domestic violence and such won't happen. And in the end, you know, it's our kids that get the reward of fixing those kind of things, and that's where my heart's at. I had notes. I do this every time. So this Saturday, September 14th, thank you for letting us shut down the street. We're shutting it down at 7:00 in the morning. I'll have them motorcycles out of town at 10:00, 10:00-ish. My crew will have it cleaned up by 11:00 and on over to Diamond Springs Firehouse where we have the barbecue and everything. We have a couple of speakers out there in the morning. Just while we have them trapped there, we give them a little message of what we're riding about, and then we go have fun. But hopefully, we send them out of there with the thought. Those bandanas you're wearing was made by somebody that helps me out every year, local in this community, that was also affected greatly by domestic violence. And I won't get into all that, but there's a lot of love and heart in those. She's in the audience now, and I'll just leave it like that. What am I forgetting?[1223.42][1223.42](LAUGHING). Thank you, guys. And Madam Mayor, you know, it'd be an honor if maybe you come out that morning. You know, the whole council, I wish you'd come out and just check it out and maybe take the microphone for a minute or two. It's a little different crowd than you see here, but they're very receptive, and they're all good people, very giving, and it would be a high honor.
I am unfortunately out of town this Saturday until about 1:00. Otherwise, I would so be there, and I greatly apologize that I'm not available.
I'll try to be there.
Oh, good. Vice Mayor Hagan can represent.
Been there, done it.
And we all commend you that you have taken a tragic situation and used it to bless. And you have our utmost respect and thanks, and I have to say, your sister would be incredibly proud.
Yeah. I wish she was here running it.
I bet you.
And is there anybody here that's supporting Casey's Ride in the backyard anywhere?
Stand up.[1287.83][1287.83](APPLAUSE).
That's-- we got a lot of our sponsors in there, too. A couple of them, a lot of riders, and there's some family out there. And I thank you guys all for always supporting, and thank you for coming down here tonight. And thank you, guys. And I know I forgot something, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Barelli has a comment.
I just want to tell you something. I had the opportunity to ride monthly with a lady that went on the ride last year. She and her girlfriend, their husbands, as a surprise, bought them the ride to go with you guys. I tell you, she has told me the most wonderful stories. They had so much fun that I was ready to go and buy a ticket, but I chickened out. Anyway, I just want to tell you that, that it was-- she said it was just the most fun that she's had for a long, long time, and she really appreciated. She said all the guys were just wonderful, and she'd never been on a motorcycle in her life, but she said she wasn't scared. You guys just took really good care of everybody, and so I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Pat for his energy and his soul in this event. And I would call anyone-- unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town this weekend, too, but to go downtown on Main Street and watch over 300 bikes roar out of this town is truly-- it just tears at your heart that the roar and all those people standing there for the-- they're roaring out of here for the same cause, and that's to put an end to domestic violence. And it's sad that we have it, but it's really rewarding to look at all the support that Pat has brought to Main Street and to this little town for the Center for Domestic Free Relationships, and I really applaud you for your efforts.
Thank you, and definitely not alone. I mean, it takes-- there's 100 people out there putting this on, and they all work very, very hard, very hard.
So did you tell me it was 330 last year?
We had over 300, some number like that, registered. Not necessarily bikes. Some of them are double, but it looks like 1,000 when they're going down the road. I love it.[1420.65][1420.65](LAUGHING).
It's a parade, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for being here, and we wish you.
Also, excuse me. Also, our website, casyrideforhope.com, and it's on there, and there's a nice half-hour movie out there, half-hour to watch that will touch your heart. It did mine, and thank you, guys.
Have a great ride on Saturday. Thanks for being here.[1446.15][1446.15](APPLAUSE). With that, we move on to Item Four, Closed Session Report. City Attorney Driscoll.
Madam Mayor, we have no closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Sounds good. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or amendments to it?
A move for adoption.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Barelli, seconded by Vice Mayor Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. And next, always a favorite, ceremonial matters. And this is very exciting, and we have a wonderful turnout tonight. Modesto is in the house. And so with that, we would like to welcome our new police chief, Scott Heller, to come up front and be sworn in by our city clerk, Susan Zito.[1497.65][1497.65](APPLAUSE). Chief Heller, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I--
Aye, Scott Heller.
Do solemnly affirm--
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend--
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California--
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies--
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic--
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith--
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance--
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States--
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California--
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely--
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation--
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion--
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully--
And that I will well and faithfully--
Discharge the duties--
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter--
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1577.86][1577.86](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Mayor, thank you.[1580.86][1580.86](APPLAUSE).
And Chief Heller, if we can get you to come to the podium for a second, I would just like to say a few brief words, and I'm sure you have also some remarks, but the amazing crowd that is driven all the way from Modesto to support you is a tribute to who you are. I am blown away by that. And on behalf of this council, we had the great privilege of sitting in on the rigorous interview process as we were selecting this incredibly important position for our city. And there were a lot of really qualified candidates, and Chief Heller was absolutely at the top. And you just have our full support. We are so grateful that you're here. We welcome the Heller family with open arms, and we look forward to having you just immerse yourself in our community, and we all stand at the ready, willing to help you, welcome you into the Placerville family. And so we're just so grateful you're here, and congratulations, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you to the council, the city manager, for selecting me. I would like to recognize, if I could, just real quick. I saw the-- it's kind of difficult to spin around here.[1676.15][1676.15](LAUGHING). How's that? Is that better?
That's good.[1680.15][1680.15](LAUGHING).
The sheriff is in the back there, and there's a few chiefs here. Chief McGill from up in Truckee, retired Chief Ballantyne from Modesto, many members of the Modesto Command Staff, CHP Commander, and members of the Placerville Police Department, my wife, my children, my daughter, who is behaving very well this evening.[1705.83][1705.83](LAUGHING). I'm very proud of that. Now, I look forward, like I had said when I was introduced two weeks ago, I look forward to building strong partnerships with the council, the city manager, the other department heads, the members of community-based groups, faith-based groups, the Placerville Police Department. My family and I look forward to making the transition here into the city of Placerville, and we'll be doing that as quickly as we can, although it does take a little bit of a transition, so bear with me on that. I'll be making my rounds, try to get to know everybody. I got to meet quite a few people here this evening. My mission, as I see it, is rather basic for me, and that is to-- we're in the service delivery business as a police department. That's what we do. Our product is service. And so I look to make sure that we deliver the best possible service that we can as a department, and also to improve the quality of life as best I can, as best this department can here in the city of Placerville. So thank you very much. I'm honored and humbled to be here today, and thank you.[1774.01][1774.01](APPLAUSE). Good.
And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we will also excuse Chief Heller tonight only to enjoy this group and to enjoy your family and friends, and we look forward to seeing you in two weeks back at this council meeting. But have a wonderful evening, and thank you all for being here to support this important step in the chief's career. in the chief's career. So, appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you, appreciate it. With that, we are on item 6.2, an under ceremonial matters, a proclamation of the City Council declaring September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Placerville. And at this point, I'd like to invite Betty Zerlender up. She's a part of the Daughters of the American Revolution to receive this proclamation. Good evening, Betty. If you'd like to come up to the podium there. Sorry, sorry. The podium, right there. Sorry. There you go. Thank you, sorry about that. A proclamation of the City Council of the city of Placerville declaring September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Placerville. Whereas September 17th, 2013, marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Wendy Thomas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Placerville, and encourage all citizens of the city to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of this constitution, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Signed, September 10th, 2013. And I love that phrase, guardian of our liberties. So, with that, I will present this to Betty.
I think most of you know that the Daughters of the American Revolution is a non-political women's service organization that develops, that focuses on patriotism, education, and historic preservation. And we thank the City Council for being so supportive of our events. Within the last year and a half, you've helped us support the marking of the Fossil House, and each year, you help us ring in the Constitution at the library. We'll be doing that on September 18th this year. We get there a bit early, and we hold everyone that comes at 12:00, waiting to come into the library hostage, and then we ring the bell, and they can all enter the library and sign the Constitution. It's kind of a fun thing that we do, and we invite you all to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Betty, what time is that? Is it at 12:00 noon?
12:00 noon. At 12:00 noon, yes.
On September 18th?
September 18th. That's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Yes. And the Constitution will be in the library, available for visitors to sign for a week. So, and the children love to do that. We try to make sure all the homeschool kids know about that.
Oh, great. Oh, what a lovely thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know Councilmember Patton has a few comments she'd like to make.
I'm a moderate history buff, and one of my favorite speakers is Benjamin Franklin, one of the signers. And also, he wrote this, this is his speech, I'll just, they are very long-winded in these days, so I paraphrased it as much as I could to get the essence, because we sit up here and we make decisions based, using the framework of the Constitution. And I love what he said. He says, "Mr. President, I confess that there are several parts of this Constitution which I do not at present approve, but I am not sure I shall never approve them. For having lived long, I have experienced many instances of being obliged by better information or fuller consideration to change opinions even on important subjects which I once thought right but found to be otherwise. It is therefore that the older I grow, the more apt I am to doubt my own judgment and to pay more respect to the judgment of others. Most men think themselves in possession of all truth, and that whenever others differ from them, it is so far error. In these sentiments, sir, I agree to this Constitution with all its faults, if they are such. I doubt, too, whether any other convention we can obtain may be able to make a better Constitution. For, when you assemble a number of men to have the advantage of their joint wisdom, you inevitably assemble with those men all their prejudices, their passions, their errors of opinion, their local interests, and their selfish views. From such an assembly can a perfect production be expected? It therefore astonishes me, sir, to find this system approaching so near to perfection as it does, and I think it will astonish our enemies. Thus I consent, sir, to this Constitution, because I expect no better, and because I am not sure that it is not the best. The opinions I have had of its errors, I sacrifice to the public good. I have never whispered a syllable of them abroad. Within these walls they were born, and here they shall die. If every one of us in returning to our constituents were to report the objections he has had to it, and endeavor to gain partisans in support of them, we might prevent its being generally received, and thereby lose all the salutary efforts and great advantages resulting naturally in our favor, from our real or apparent unanimity. Much of the strength and the efficiency of any government in procuring and securing happiness to the people depends on opinion, on the general opinion of the goodness of the government, as well as of the wisdom and the integrity of its governors. I hope, therefore, that for our own sakes, as a part of the people, and for the sake of posterity, we shall act heartily and unanimously in recommending this Constitution wherever our influence may extend, and turn our future thoughts and endeavors to the means of having it well-administered." And I, it moves me every time I read that.
Thank you for that meaningful reminder of what this is all about. Thank you. That was wonderful. All right. And with that inspiration, we move on to item seven, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council in any matter not on the agenda. Please, when you approach the podium, give your name for the record. And before we open oral communications, is there any written communications, Mr. Morris?
None, thank you.
All right. With that, I will open public comment. Is there any person wishing to address this council? Good evening.
Good evening. Sue Rodman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. I had the privilege of getting my very first parking ticket.
I paid one last week.
Yes, last week, in our parking garage. And so I went down to the police department to pay it, and I was told we have outsourced the collection of our tickets and the money to somewhere in Santa Rosa, about which I was a little bit appalled. So, I wondered why we had done that, and I think if we are collecting somewhere between 15 and 20 parking tickets a day, it would probably pay us to bring that home to our own city administration and collect those here, instead of paying someone else in Santa Rosa, which is certainly not even in the county. And we have all the signs about, please shop in Placerville, please do your business in Placerville. I would pay my parking ticket in Placerville a lot more gladly than I was to send it to Santa Rosa. And I have one more suggestion. We can't maintain our parking lots, is the thing I've heard several times. A few years ago, I heard it again this year. Well, maybe if we brought our ticket collection back to Placerville and changed to one hour free parking instead of two, we would have the funds to maintain our parking lots.
We will get that answered for you. Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Good evening.
Good evening, and where did all those handsome men go to?
Across the street from everyone.
To the cyclists, if they had, were still here, I would like to say, not apropos what they came here about, but one of the things which has touched me the most greatly in recent memory was a short clip I saw just before coming here of the cyclists who are participating in the 2 million motorcycle parade to Washington. And I wish them really all the best, and am so grateful to them. If 2 million of them make it to Washington, D.C., safely, they have my vote. What I really want to comment on, or my purpose, this is following on your presentation this morning at the Board of Supervisors. I don't want to comment on the presentation itself, but I have a question, and I would really like to have it followed up on, and possibly it's already in your planning. John McCoy this morning referenced what he called, these are his words, not mine, the political cowardice of the... political cowardice of the 2008-2009 Board of Supervisors." He did not elaborate, but my educated and ignorant possibly guess is that he's referring to what happened in 2008. In April of 2008, a group of people who had been working tirelessly with a great track record on behalf of homeless, the homeless population in Placerville, had gone before the Board of Supervisors with a proposal for a community development block grant from the State of California. They were asking for just under $1.5 million. A couple months later, they did, in fact, that grant was awarded, just short of, about $25,000 short of what they asked for. Their proposal was for a year-round emergency facility which would accommodate at any one time 60, you know, would have 64 beds, so I'm assuming 64 people. But it was a year-round, complete shelter with full services. Something happened to that grant from the time of receipt till when it went into a black hole. I don't know if that money is still available, but I'd hate to see you get set further back. I know that it was agreed this morning that there would be an inter-agency task force to take this forward, to find some kind of resolution and to accommodate all the kinds of points that were brought forward this morning, because there was a wealth of public input, and it was all very good. I didn't think there was any bad input. So I know a lot of people are working very, very hard. And if you're the slightest bit interested, I just happen to have the identification number of that particular grant, or, yeah, the block grant, but I can't read my own handwriting right now. Ah, yes, here we go. It was the State's Agreement Number 08-STBG-4982. And the total amount that was awarded was $1,470,975. It would be lovely if you could get your hands on that money. Good luck.
Thank you. Any other person wishing to address this council? With that, I'll close Public Comment, and we'll get some questions answered. Mr. Morris, would you like to talk about the outsourced parking?
It'd probably be better if we came back at a future meeting with that, give you the details. But I can just summarize, I'm fairly confident that the service being provided, the reason it's being done that way is, it is actually saving us money than doing it internally. And that's the only reason we would do that. But we should bring back further details on that.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that back at a later time. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Verkamp, for the block grant number. I believe that money was returned to the county and is not available. Do you have any other?
To the state.
To the state, I'm sorry. Yeah, to the state. But we will continue to pursue this matter, so thank you for that. All right. With that, we are on Item 8, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Does any member of the council wish to do so? No? Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on an item on the Consent Calendar? No. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move Consent.
Second.
Moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please, Macedo?
Just for clarification, I believe on Item 8.1, Councilmember Wilkins was going to abstain the minutes, since she was absent at the last meeting.
Thank you.
With that, Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Patton?
Aye. I think, well, I think I was absent also. That's my problem with that.
I believe you can approve minutes, can't you? Without abstaining?
That's what we were told.
Yeah.
You can, if you've reviewed the tape of the meeting?
Okay.
I have not.
Okay. If you haven't, then I would recommend you don't.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So I have to abstain?
On 8.1 only.
On 8.1, right?
Yes, right.
Councilmember Patton?
So just abstain on 8.1?
Abstain from 8.1, aye on the rest.
You were here, Carol.
Yeah, I remember last year.
It's been a long couple of weeks, huh? So is that an aye, Carol?
Time flies when you haven't done Carol.
I still apologize.
No problem.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. We're now on to Item 9.1. This is an exciting item, the second reading of an ordinance, basically the park, the park regulations. So, Mr. Yule, we are at the tail end of this.
Yeah.
Exciting.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A revised draft park rules ordinance was presented to City Council on August 27. At the August 27 meeting, it was decided to remove language regarding concealed weapons permits, make a minor change to the park hours of operation, and condense language regarding the use of bicycles and skateboards within parks. The ordinance, as introduced, reflects those changes. The proposed ordinance provides the necessary language to ensure that posted rules can be enforced by the Director of Community Services or a police officer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have one. Has there been any designs for the signs yet? Do we have any idea what they look like? Is there going to be a review of those? My fear is we have four-by-eight sheets of plywood with 15 million rules on them.
Our intent is to take, assuming the ordinance is passed tonight, to take it back to our Recreation and Parks Commission for further discussion, to come up with a signage plan for each park.
Will it go to the, my question is, would it go to the Planning Commission at all, or just to the Recreation and Parks Commission?
Our intent was to keep it at the parks and recreation level.
Yeah, there is no requirement to go back to the Planning Commission, and our intent was to let the Recreation and Park Commission finalize it unless the council has other recommendations on it, so.
We had, I don't know if you remember, the issue of the park over by, up at Clay Street on Cottonwood, an issue with just using the city's logo, and then changing it from the city's logo to the Lions Club.
Kiwanis.
And so, or Kiwanis. I just, I think for a matter of protocol and continuity throughout the city, that if it's going to be the Recreation and Parks, or if it's going to be the Planning Commission, it'd be the same entity, so that everything kind of looks the same, instead of a different feel or flavor. And that's my point, is that, you know, who ultimately has responsibility for that sign, for the signs, so that they look good? As Lord knows, we have issues with signs.
Yeah, makes sense. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Patton. All right. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Good evening, Ms. Verkamp.
Good evening. This is my last opportunity to speak on behalf of my dog and myself, so I can't let it go by. And this is, this is, please take this in the spirit in which it's intended. But I have, would like to make the observation that at no time has there been a proposal that small children be put on leashes, or that their parents have permits to bring them into the park. And the reason I make this observation is because I've been watching small children periodically, but with great vigor and concentration ever since this issue came up, watching them pull up great globs of grass from the turf on the grassy knoll that's at the front of Rotary Park. On a couple of occasions, I've, you know, when the parents weren't too close by to take offense, I've said to the kids, "Look, the city goes to great trouble to make this nice for us. Please don't pull up the grass. When Mom and Dad are around, I'm less comfortable doing that." But my point is that, in my opinion, small children, who are small children and should not be put on leashes, do far more damage than my dog ever would. But go ahead and pass your ordinance.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll close Public Comment and bring it back to the council for action. Any other final comments? Do I hear a motion?
Aye, so move. Would you like me to read the full content of both? Waive the second reading of an ordinance, amending Title 8, Chapters 11, Park Regulations, and 14, Alcoholic Beverages; Title 7, Chapter 2, Litter Regulations; and Title 6, Chapter 10, Sound Amplifying Equipment of the Placerville Municipal Code, and to adopt said ordinance.
Amen. It's been moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Councilmember Wilkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone, for all your work on this. This is wonderful that we have this finished. That's fabulous. And great appreciation to the Park and Recs Commission and Steve Yule for all your time on this. Public hearing, none scheduled. Item 11, 11.1, with that I need to recuse myself on this due to a conflict of interest of my husband's business, the proximity to it, and I will turn that over to Vice Mayor Hagan.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Voss, you could please start with the reconsideration of declaration of the roof sign located at 301 Main Street, AKA the Herrick Building, as a public nuisance and its abatement thereof by the City Council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hagan. Let me start with some background on the particular sign in question. The 56-square-foot roof sign was legally installed under permit to the former Zo's Restaurant back on March 11, 1982. The restaurant use of the building ceased approximately circa 2006. City Code expressly prohibits roof signs. The subject roof sign is defined as an illegal on-premise sign pursuant to Code Section 10417B2, which defines any on-premise, on-premises sign that was legally erected but whose use has ceased, and that the business identified or advertised has been abandoned. An abandoned business is defined under County Code as a business, I mean, City Code, which has not operated on a regular basis for 180 days or more. No activity has occurred within the building for several years. On August 9 of 2011, the City Council declared approximately 21 abandoned signs located on approximately 18 properties within the city to be public nuisances, and declared its intent to cause their abatement, which included the subject roof sign. The council's actions specified that formal protests to the abatement process would be held on two separate dates, those being August 23 of 2011 and September 13 of 2011 in council meetings. On August 23 hearing, the council directed that the property owners would have 18 months to bring their illegal signs into compliance. No protest was made by the owners of 301 Main Street at the August 23 council meeting. At the September 13 meeting of 2011, a list of illegal signs was reduced to 14 due to voluntary compliance with the sign abatement process. The council then directed that the remaining property owners be allowed a one-year period to comply, and directed staff to return with a progress report following 120 days. At the March 27, 2012 council meeting, staff provided a report to the council on the status of the illegal sign abatement inventory, and this was the last report that was given to the council in this abatement process. Council directed staff to continue to work with the property owners to bring their signs into compliance and pursue administrative sanctions for non-compliant properties. Specifically in regards to 301 Main, the council recognized that the property was recently acquired, and that was on March 6 of 2012, by the present owners, Timothy and Sue Taylor. The council directed staff to allow the Taylors 60 days to either remove the sign or submit justification to the council to allow the sign to remain. A written justification was received by the city on May 30 of 2012, which is included in your staff report as Exhibit A. And a timeline is also provided in the staff report as Exhibit B for your reference. The current owner's justification statement contends that the sign has existed on the building for 30 years, and may have been, and may be considered a landmark to some. Additionally, the owners contend that the sign has commercial value by increasing the visibility of the building's future tenants to the traveling public on U.S. Highway 50. It is staff's opinion that the sign has clearly lost any entitlement due to the abandonment of the building prior to the acquisition of the property by its current owners, and that the city's sign ordinance was comprehensively updated approximately nine years ago to balance the business needs of the community while considering the unique historic character of the town. The sign is located within a designated scenic highway corridor. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the sign be removed in accordance with the previous actions of the City Council to abate those signs declared public nuisances. As reported to the council on March 27 of 2012, staff report, the subject roof sign failed to bring the sign into compliance as of March 21 of 2012, exceeding the 120-day timeframe that was provided by the council at that time. The applicants are requesting that the sign being on the building for 30 years be exempted and grandfathered in. The only means under the code to exempt a sign is if the roof sign is determined to be historic. Typically, a structure is reviewed for historic value after 50 years. The sign could be exempted and grandfathered in if determined to be an historic sign under Code Section 1417G6. That determination would be made by the Planning Commission by mint in order in accordance with the City Code. The staff is recommending to your council deny the request of the current owners to declare that the existing roof sign located on the building at 301 Main Street is illegal non-conforming use, and to direct that the owners remove the roof sign within 60 days, and in three, direct staff to monitor the removal of the sign within the specified time period and proceed with administrative abatement proceedings should the sign not be removed within the 60-day time period. And that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions of staff by council?
Yeah, I have two questions. So, they were given 60 days to either remove the sign or submit justification, and they did that, but you didn't think that the justification was sufficient? Is that?
That would be staff's opinion.
Okay.
Because basically, they're asking that the sign be exempted and grandfathered in. So typically, when a use or structure is grandfathered in, under the code, it's, that would be deemed then illegal non-conforming use, and I think, under operation of law, the sign is an abandoned sign, and that's, and that would be based on a factual basis. But the code does allow a historic sign to remain. It would be exempt from all our development standards in the code. And so unless it can be declared historic, which, you know, in staff's opinion, it was installed in 1980, that would not qualify as historic. So therefore, we consider it an illegal sign.
Okay. Are there other illegal signs up in Placerville right now?
I don't, I don't know at this moment. I would say there probably still are. At the March 27 staff report on the status of the abatement process, I believe there are about nine signs at that time that were still considered illegal and were subject to your abatement procedure. So staff basically would like to come back at some future date and continue with that process. But I'm focused mainly on this particular sign.
So have the other property owners of the other nine signs, have they been given the 60 days to, are they going through the exact same process as this Main Street?
I think this one was different, because the owners did come to the council at that particular meeting requesting that their sign be exempted, and then, the council then directed that they provide justification for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, St.
Well, I'd like a clarification. The staff report says that originally there were 21 signs deemed illegal, and of those 14 have been either brought into compliance or removed. Is that accurate? And that's how I read the staff report.
Yes, that is accurate as of March 27 of 2012. But we were looking at that, that existing 14. I think the 14 is now nine.
And so my point is that there was significant emphasis, not only from staff, but also from business owners to come into compliance with the rules.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, St. Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public for comments. Please state your name for the record.
Sue Taylor, just a question. Do I get to present my issue on this and then have a follow-up after public comment, or I just am part of the public?
No, you can go ahead and present your side. I think it's pretty clear.
Thank you. Sue Taylor, owner of the building. Let me clarify a few things that took place from this timeline. First, I gotta say, I just feel a little bit trapped by this scenario of where we're here at this position. I really would have liked to continue to work through this with the city as we were doing before Pierre came. And no offense to Pierre, but... here at this position. I really would have liked to continue to work through this with the city as we were doing before Pierre came. And no offense to Pierre, but basically, our application was sitting on the desk when he showed up, and so that's why we're now before the council. I was gonna go through town and show all the examples, but it was of, I'm not even sure how to debate this issue because I don't know if I'm being penalized because of the Zoe's Restaurant is no longer there as a business or because it's a roof sign. If we had worked and known the issue that was gonna be brought today, which I still don't, I could have put Sue Taylor Design on there, and it would have been a viable business. So I wish we had the opportunity to have this discussion before it got to this point. So first of all, again, my understanding is in 1982, it was a legal building permit was issued for this sign. It wasn't a special use permit. So I don't know if that makes a difference on being able to use new codes for old permits. The other issue is that the report said that no protest was made by the owners at August 23. At the time, Charlene McClassen made a protest along with myself. So there was protest, but it wasn't by the owners. We actually went to the city council and met with them after this, with the Saunders, and mentioned that Charlene was a bit upset because she was told that she wasn't an agent for the building, therefore she could not comment to protest. The Saunders clarified that she could speak for them when we met together, and therefore, there was a protest. Many of the other sign owners that had representation at the time were able to work something out with the city. The bigger issue for us was the buildings. We really wanted to get those fixed, and it's still that. I could have spent two days bringing displays and examples and law, or I could spend two days working on the building. I chose to work on those buildings. On March 6, we acquired the building in 2012. And by the way, this timeline's wrong because it shows we asked for, our letter was requested on 2013. It's at the very bottom. It was actually 2012. So we were, acquired the building on March 6. We talked to many different people. I think my husband, it was secondhand, so I can't say for sure, but he talked to Andrew about the sign. And it was suggested that we write a letter to justify it so that we wouldn't, this would be resolved. So he did that. That was on May 30, and we took off the other sign that was never permitted, we took it off. I wish somebody, you know, I feel like, again, the only reason we're singled out because we were encouraged to write a letter to the city to do something, and it was sitting there when Pierre shows up, and so we ended up on the agenda. We were put on the agenda for a few weeks ago without any notice. Someone called me to tell me it was gonna be on the city council agenda, and I went to Pierre and asked, could you please postpone it until we have time to address it? I still, I still don't feel prepared to address this sign. We're working on the buildings. I would have rather had worked with the city. We're doing really good to work together. We're, Pierre even mentioned that at the PDA meeting, that we're next-door neighbors, and so we can run back and forth, and, which has been kinda nice, that I'm knocking at their door every day, or their, you know, mainly, I'm probably more at their place than they're at mine. So it's been a good relationship. I just wish we could have talked about this sign and told me, what is it that would make it legal, that you would feel comfortable with? Is it having something on there? If, if that's the deal, we would work with the city and maybe put something on there that would benefit, be beneficial to the whole city. Visit Historic Hangtown, or visit Placerville, or something until we have the opportunity to occupy the building. Right now, we can't occupy the building because we're working on it. I feel like we have a different situation than most people, and I would be willing to work with Carol and everybody on a sign that we could put on there temporarily if that would comply, to set this aside until we can go to a different step. I don't wanna be oppositional. I wanna be able to work with the city. We had a whole new presence going, and I just, I feel like this is the wrong time to be doing this. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Come on. State your name for the record.
Joanne Rogers. This is an issue that came up before the Historical Advisory Committee, so I'm really involved in this, and it was thoroughly discussed over a year ago. And after much research on our part, it was found that we in no way could justify having the sign there because, number one, that is a historic building, and we comply with the Department of Interior Standards on what you can and cannot do with historic buildings in historic districts. So it has all to do about a sign. It doesn't matter if it says, "Welcome to Placerville," or "This is the Hangman's Tree." It's very clear that unless that sign was there 50 years or more and proven by historical pictures and so forth, you cannot erect that. And then number, and then following up with that, you have to also comply with the Lincoln Highway Guidelines on signage. The City of Placerville policy is clearly no roof signs, and historic districts have their own sign, no roof sign guidelines. So to me, it's an issue that was settled a year ago, and it keeps on trying to be brought up again, and I totally agree with the recommendation that, the three recommendations that the Director of Development Services has proposed. Thank you.
I live in Shingle Springs, but I did live here for 20 years over off of Woodridge. I think what's going on right now is just absolutely crazy. Our next item is billboards. City's gonna put a bid out to get two billboards down the road, new contractors to put more ad content on it, and here you are screaming about a site, an onsite business sign. When you come down the freeway and you look over there, it's, it's a beautiful location, and I don't care what's on there. I tell you, whatever people see on that freeway are gonna draw them into town. So you're not gonna get a better location than to put something on there to draw people into town. And like I said, the next item is all about putting billboards up again in town, renewing contracts on them, and here you are, you know, coming down hard on a, on a business owner here in town that's struggling to, you know, get that building in shape and get it going with a, with a sign on top of it. That'd be great advertising for Placerville. Thank you.
My name is Kirk Smith of Placerville, and I have the uncomfortable position of being here with friends on both sides of the question. But I think it's a great time for you to start to look at the sign ordinance and maybe in the light of the work that's been done so far, see if it doesn't need some revision. Because while the purpose is well-intended and seeks an important objective, it's not been done in the most uniform and sensible, logical fashion. For example, as you go up Sacramento Street, there was, for as long as I can remember, a long, tall, tall sign that was for the Red Cross. That's all it was, was the Red Cross. Now, it's true, it was an abandoned building, but to people all over the world, no matter what language they speak, or even if they're illiterate, the Red Cross, or the Red Crescent is a symbol of community, of comfort, of welcome. At least that's what it does for me. It says the same thing that the sign across the street says with lots of words. And what did you do? You required them to take that sign down and replace it with something that was inconformity and has all the ambiance of Rancho Cordova. I mean, it's a lot to read as you go by at 15 miles per hour. And oh, by the way, now that you brought it down, it's in front of a road sign, so you can't really read it very well. Now, that's one example of where it doesn't seem like a cookie cutter solution really worked to achieve your goals. And I don't know if it was, when I say "as long as I can remember," it doesn't mean, it might even go back to the historic period under some guidelines, like 1960s. And then you go up the street, and is there anybody here who remembers, who doesn't remember how long Thompson Motors was abandoned, that it moved down to Placerville Drive? But on that big, tall pole sign, they had a large banner declaring "For Lease," but it was still abandoned. There are other businesses that had "For Lease," whether we're looking for tenants at a lower level and for a shorter period of time. That doesn't necessarily make a whole bunch of sense. And then beyond that, there is a auto body shop that has no signage and couldn't get signage but needs signage, unlike Thompson Motors, because it's not along the central roadway. On Main Street, I'm not opposing pole signs generally, but I think on Main Street in the historic area, I actually think that it would be time to reevaluate and do what a lot of other older communities that favor those kinds of aesthetics do, which is you have only signs that are made of wood, and they're maybe two by three feet, because you want people to get out of their cars and walk. Because Placerville, Main Street, has a lot of great businesses and great services that you can only find there and not at your box store down the highway. So I'm not suggesting that you don't have the ordinances in some respects arguably stronger, but at least come up with some sensible answers. And in the case of something that has of great historic value, that building, keep in mind the schizophrenic posture of this body when it wasn't that long ago you had an employee declare in an affidavit that there was no historic value to the Herrick Mansion, something that prompted every historian in Placerville to be angry because it was an outrageous lie, as one historian put it. Because it was the, on second floor, it was the post office for a long time, and before you had Twitter and social media, that was how you got in touch with people. You'd go down to the post office, "Hey, John, you got any color in that mine of yours?" Or, "Susie, how's the pear crop this year?" So that's where it was. And in the basement, I can name about 15 people who remember the stump of the Hangman's Tree itself. So there you have someone declaring it had no historic value. The PNM Market was there. Now, if you took Zoe's sign and replaced it with PNM Market, would that make it more historic? I'm suggesting that in the case of the Herrick Mansion, where the record of administrative law for that building has been so atrocious, that you have some, a little bit more discretion. Give them a chance to complete their project and prove that those who had doubts were in error, that you can save that building, and it would be something of a great benefit to this community, as, as most of us recognize it is. Because, give them some flexibility. That's where it's really appropriate here. Maybe there's another kind of sign you could put up that would, would be consistent with the kind of architectural setting you had in an earlier period. I didn't know that this was gonna be up merely because from the proponent's side, didn't look at your agenda, they said it was like October. But what I would have brought you is an old photograph of Placerville, the oldest of downtown Placerville, that you can get from Steve Crandall, and it has right on Main Street. This is the oldest photograph, and what's interesting, among other things, is you've got people mining for gold on Main Street, and the streets are with mud, but then you have this large pole sign for hotel, which I just think is nice when you think how ignorant our founders were. They didn't know you shouldn't have those things. So when, when you're going back to the, citing the historic body, I'm sorry, but as a lawyer, I was embarrassed with what I saw. I mean, if you thought the federal government was bad and the District of Columbia, they look efficient compared to what I saw. You have, for example, just the
I'm gonna ask you if that's it. You think you've made your point? Please sum it up.
Oh, sure. Rather than do it in pleadings, I'll just sum up by saying that if Vladimir Putin and Barack Obama can find a compromise between, you know, genocidal gas on one side and airstrikes
That's kinda beyond our, that's beyond our scope, but go ahead.
I bet that in your scope, the five of you or four, whatever's left, can probably come up with a compromise that makes some common sense, a lot more common sense than taking down the Red Cross sign.
Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
A couple of comments about the sign itself. Number one, if this weren't on the agenda, I wouldn't even know it was there. And so where I go from that is I don't know what harm it's doing.
So in other words, it's not visible?
I haven't a clue. I haven't a clue. I didn't know it was there. And I do kind of see my environment, but what I would say beyond that is, I absolutely trust Sue Taylor and her husband, Tim, to put something there which will be a credit to Placerville. I would also say that regulations about signage and a whole lot of other things are very idiosyncratic. They have nothing to do with the common good, per se, but more the judgment at the moment of the group of people who were making the decision. A different group of people might have made a different decision. So one cannot by any criteria say that that sign is mortally flawed because it's not. When I was looking at what's on the agenda, I saw that the Taylors are to be monitored. I think that's kind of heavy. Either they take it down or they don't take it down, but you really don't need to spend a lot of energy monitoring them between now and day 60. They're probably not going to leave Placerville with anything terrible behind them. But the last thing I would like to say is, when I was looking at the agenda, it speaks about proceeding with administrative abatement proceedings. And, you know, one gets so used to reading over this kind of language and just assuming that you know what it means. Quite frankly, I didn't know what it meant. I, my first question to myself was, are they going to be fined a lot of money? Are they going to have their building confiscated from them? What does this actually mean? So I looked it up to see what administrative abatement proceedings meant. It took me to things about health and safety and public nuisances. Public nuisance seemed to be a really big thing in relation to this administrative abatement proceedings. And so let me tell you what I found, and I'm going to do you the, I'm going to inflict this on you, because this is what I found about public nuisance. And this is apropos government code. I'm not making this up. It's not a Wikipedia entry. The term "public nuisance" covers a wide variety of minor crimes that threaten the health, morals, safety, comfort, convenience, or welfare of a community. Violators may be punished by a criminal sentence, a fine, or both. A defendant may also be required to remove a nuisance or to pay the costs of removal. For example, a manufacturer who has polluted a stream might be fined and might be ordered to pay the cost of cleanup. Public nuisances may interfere with public health, such as in the keeping of diseased animals or a malarial pond. Public safety nuisances include shooting fireworks in the streets, storing explosives, practicing medicine without a license, or harboring a vicious dog. Houses of prostitution, illegal liquor establishments, gaming houses, and unlicensed prize fights are examples of nuisances that interfere with public morals. Obstructing a highway or creating a condition to make travel unsafe or highly disagreeable are examples of nuisances threatening the public convenience. I don't feel threatened by that sign, and I do think you probably have some leeway. Thank you.
I'm a Shingle Springs resident. I grew up here in Eldorado County. I went to Eldorado High School. I have a really strong attachment and fondness for downtown Placerville. That's where we used to have the marching band parades and all that kind of stuff. And so therefore, I was very excited when the building was starting to be restored and stuff. I even came down one morning when they were doing one of those girder big things and up and stuff. It was quite exciting, saw Pierre there and the mayor. It was a big deal. I mean, people are really excited about this, and that sign, you know, was originally permitted, and it came with the building. So I was looking through this, I think this is called a staff report, manager's report, sorry. So I was looking at it, and the last entry on here really, on the city's part, says June 5, 2012. The commission took no action regarding the roof sign due to council's action on March 27, 2012. So I went back to March 27, and it looked like the reason that they didn't take any action in June was because it says right here, "Council directs staff to continue working with property owners to achieve compliance." So it sounds like that they were really working things out, and it was a positive thing. And, you know, And, you know, I'm really happy that the Taylors are working on that building and they're putting all that energy into it. And I'm sure that the sign was probably the last thing on their mind. So I would really like to encourage you guys to continue working with them on it. I drove through downtown Placerville today, and there are some really ugly signs out there. This particular sign, I looked where it's facing and stuff, there's nothing on it at this very moment, but there could be a really nice, attractive sign that would welcome people to downtown Placerville. It's right there by the parking garage, it could be a very positive thing. And like I said originally, it really was originally permitted legally. So I would just like to encourage you guys to continue working with the Taylors. It sounds like everything was going really well, and I think that would be a really nice show of goodwill on the part of the city.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident.
Thank you, Sue.
I went looking for this sign, and oh yeah, it is there. I find it very unobtrusive. You can hardly see it from Main Street. I think this thing seems very hypocritical, picking on the Taylors who are in the expensive process of restoration of historic buildings. And yet, we're going to keep those two obnoxious billboards on Highway 50? Why? Oh, I get it. The billboards produce income, don't they? It's all about the money. The Taylor sign is not, not obnoxious. It's not even easily seen on Main Street. If we make the Taylors remove their roof sign, we should require removal of those much more visible high billboards from our scenic Highway 50 corridor. If we're gonna have a scenic Highway 50 corridor, let's not be hypocritical about it. Get rid of those stupid billboards.
Michael.
Good evening. Michael Drobich, Placerville. And first, full disclosure, I am helping with the restoration of the buildings at 301 and 305. Point of order, did Joanne speak as a citizen or as an authorized spokesperson for the Historical Advisory Committee? Because there's a difference.
We'll get that clarified, but--
Okay. Also, 301 is not in a historical district and is not a registered historical structure, I do believe. So it technically wouldn't have fallen under Historical Advisory Committee purview, 301 specifically. I like the idea of a potential temporary sign. Visit historic Hangtown, visit historic Placerville, visit historic downtown, and that could be done easy. Easy ad copy. And let the Taylors, the roofers are on their way. In short order, it will be re-roofed. So imposing a deadline on them, just increase costs maybe prematurely, and if anything, give them an extension. Or allow the Planning Commission to hear the request of a historical sign exemption, and I would exempt myself, recuse myself, because I am also on the Planning Commission. I would like to see the sign grandfathered, because it was legally approved in eighty-two. In 2002, the new side ordinance language came in with the 180-day abandoned business, which is what this is being used to remove their roof sign. It was legally approved, it was not a conditional use permit, it was a permit that lasts with that building in perpetuity. Also, side note, billboards and off-premise signs are expressly prohibited under the city code side ordinance, so I don't know what the next agenda item is all about. Also, was, per city code, a written ten-day working notice written to, given to the Taylors, stating date, time, place, and purpose of hearing? Recently, council, you just extended entitlements for a given number of projects. Gave them eighteen months. Gets them out of paying extension fees, maybe new site plan review, other new requirements. So you showed mercy on them, and you stated it was because of the economic downturn, you know, we're trying to get things going, we're trying to get things going. The Taylors are doing it right now. You see it. They're taking buildings that were condemned, and they're rebuilding them, they're gonna repurpose them, they're gonna revitalize that corner. So just help, help them. You help, help them, whatever. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a clarification, because there was a question asked of John Rogers.
Yes, I spoke as an individual--
Thank you.
--but I happen to be on the Historic Planning Commission. And then the other clarification is that any historic building registered, which the Herrick Building also is--
I'm sorry, Joanne. Can you, because of the extended--
Okay.
It's gotta be recorded, and it won't--
Okay.
--won't be recorded unless you're at--
Half of the building is a registered land--
Start from the beginning.
What?
Start from the beginning.
Oh. I'm here as an individual speaking on this subject, but I'm also a member of the Historic Advisory Committee. And a year ago, well, let's see, let me backtrack. Okay. So that's answered to one of his questions. And number two, he brought up that that was not like a historic building. The Herrick Building has one roof, and on the right-hand side is the hangman's tree, which is a registered landmark. The one roof covers both buildings. There is a Department of the Interior rule that says you must follow these rules even if you're, if you're within 300 feet of a historic building. So for example, if they, if someone wanted to change a window into a modern window, and they're within 300 feet of a historic building, they have to follow the same rules of the Department of the Interior that apply to historic buildings.
Thank you.
Is that?
Hi, I'm Sam Parlin. I'm in Shingle Springs. But as I sit back here and listen, I keep thinking, we're talking about public nuisance, and I follow it with Ms. Veerkamp. Who is it, who is this, and I know we have laws, and I granted, we all have to have laws, but who's this being, who's the nuisance that's, I'm gonna play with words. Who's the nuisance that the public is being nuisanced? Basically, it's a public nuisance. Who is arguing or making a statement about this sign? Is it the public, or is it just the staff and the city? Because are we, are you here to, to serve the city or the public? So I just, I just think of this as a, wow, this really is, is a big topic here for the public, for the council? So I just think that you should just think about it as a, be human. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hagan and members of the council, Kathy Lishman. And I'm not sure what would be accomplished by postponing this. I'm a firm believer in the sign ordinance, and I feel that developing the sign ordinance was a compromise of a wide range of people from the community of all interests. And I feel that it should be enforced, I feel that it should be enforced even stronger than it is, and I'm sure all of you know that. Flexibility doesn't mean that they need a roof sign. I don't know what would be accomplished by postponing it and talking about it more. A new permit would not be approved today. It is non-conforming. It's been out of compliance for a long time. It probably should have come down before they bought the building. And a sign like that, to me, seems inappropriate in our historic downtown. And I don't feel that a downturned economy is, is a good time to kind of put the sign ordinance on the back burner or to relax the sign ordinance. And remember, we just got approved as a Preserve America community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I'll close the public hearing. However, I will allow Sue to answer a particular question. I guess you had a particular question--
Thank you.
--or if somebody asked a particular question of you.
Well, it's also, it's interesting that Charlene pushed to have the Preserve America sign promoted for the city, and she's the one that also lobbied for this sign. I think we're on a slippery slope. When you talk about, is, what I need to know is, first you have to tell me what compliance is. I don't, I still don't know what that is, so that we can keep the sign. I haven't been told that. I feel like we're being tricked, so that we can no longer have a roof sign. Is it about the roof sign? You know, if it's so--
Yeah.
Placerville Hardware has a roof sign. The Little New Depot has a roof sign. The Forni Building in Placerville has a roof sign. Eldorado Savings Bank has a roof sign. Round Table has a roof sign. CNH Auto Parts, Tortilla Flats, The Cosmic Cafe, and numerous others. We started taking pictures of all of them, and there's so many. I was gonna bring them all to the meeting, but again, I deferred to work on my building instead. The other issue is that Joanne spoke about the Historic Advisory Committee. We were their first test pilot project. They were to overlook the frontage of our building. When we came to the planning, Joanne contradicted what the Historic Advisory Committee had recommended. I have an issue with her representing information from the Historic Advisory Committee at this This note was put on May 16th, and I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and look at all this that you're referring to on the Historic Advisory Committee information, because we applied for the continuance of the sign on May 30th. So I'm not sure what she's talking about that they made a comment on. Also, I'm really nervous now about one, two, and three, on how we're gonna be impacted by your resolution, what you decide today. I wish you could counsel me right now of what we need to do to become compliant. Would it be better that we just remove the request and we become like everyone else that's just working with the city? Because right now, I'd feel much more comfortable without relationship than having this request placed before you, not knowing what compliance is. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And we will attempt to answer some of the questions. The staff, I'd like, maybe, I think your report is very clear that there was a, I can recall, we went through a number of these different signs. We brought them all before this body, and we reviewed all of the individual signs with individuals that came up and stepped up to the microphone with reasons for changes. And the majority of those signs are now in compliance. I don't believe, I said the majority, Sue. Did you wanna come back up and say anything else, or are you still?
Don't, we're not--
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not a debate at this point. So, but anyhow, I think that it's very clear that what's done, I believe that what needs to be done, and I, correct me if I'm wrong on the staff side, is that any business that is going through a major change, a major tenancy change in occupancy, upon completion of their stabilization work, they're going to submit a set of plans that would include the tenant improvements. And along with that would be apropos, apropos time to submit a sign plan, a master sign plan for the building, which would indicate signage or sample signs for potential tenants. And I believe that's the process that's next, that's the next step for any, any particular building. I, people have indicated they came down looking for it. Well, I came down and I was coming onto Main Street and into, Center Street, I'm sorry, from the freeway, and it was, I was at, almost at a stop before I could see the sign. But I believe that with proper placement of good signage on your walls, they would be compliant with, with the sign ordinance that we have. Maybe it's not perfect, according to Mr. Smith, and maybe it is not a perfect ordinance. I doubt if we'll ever end up with a perfect ordinance that'll satisfy everybody. But it's the sign ordinance we have, it's the side ordinance that went before the public hearings and through that process several years ago, and that's the process. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, and I'll see if, Carol, you have any comments? Yes. You used to be on the Planning Commission, so--
Actually, I'm gonna speak as one of the members of the Sign Ordinance Committee, because I've actually been engaged in a conversation with someone who wants a roof sign and was ready to be violent against anyone on the ordinance until, the committee, until he found out it was me, that I was just one of them. And I, and I mentioned to him that the committee was composed of not just business owners and not just staff people, but also members of this community, just residents. And I think that we do a disservice as the governing body when we ignore the committees that previous councils put together, for whatever reason. And this particular instance was a sign committee. Sue Taylor brought up several names of existing businesses that have signs today, and I only captured a few of them. Round Table Pizza, Cosmic Cafe, CNH Motorparts, Forni, Ready Mix, or now it's Trailers, Placerville Hardware, as being non-conforming. Those roof signs and those businesses have been in business throughout, they've never ceased business, they've never ceased operation. The committee was very adamant not to impact businesses that were current and doing their thing. They never told anyone that they had to take their sign down. They waited until there was 100, 180 days, and then the city could impose this abatement proceedings, which Mr. Driscoll was very involved in because of the costs involved and the legalities of it all, and the amortizations, and, you know, yadda, all the legalese that goes with that. But there were businesses that have removed their signs because of this ordinance, and one of them was the Tire Store. And I don't know if you remember when the Michelin Tire Store went out of business and then the Laundromat came in, and the Laundromat continued to use that humongous highway commercial sign, humongous pole sign, and at a huge expense, cut it down and took it down. They cut it down, it's down. And now there's an awning with a big hole in it. Anyways, so that, that was a business that stopped, ceased operations, and then had to take, had to, had to remove the sign when the new business came into town. The Red Cross sign, I agree with Kirk Smith, the new sign is horrible, absolutely horrible. That being said, I wasn't, I don't think, and I don't know this for a fact, whether or not that applicant or that business came in with a master sign package. I do believe in the process. I do believe that the Planning Commission looks out for the community and says when a master sign package works and when it doesn't work. And I would hold the Taylors to comply with this, comply with the city's rules. We have rules for a reason, and the sign packet and the sign ordinance is a big deal. And it's a big deal to me, and it's a big deal to a lot of people. And to, and to just kind of throw it out with the bathwater and say this, no harm, no foul, I call it a foul, because other people have to, have to abide by the rules, and other people do it on their own, and they have a better product in the end. And I applaud the Taylors for doing what you're doing to the building. And I hope, and I have full faith and confidence, as Michael Drobich said, that you're gonna come up with a sign package and a sign program that will benefit the community as well as your tenants. But a roof sign is illegal in the city limits of Placerville. And then, for those of you who were here when Michael Friedman came into town, and he said, "The framework of the buildings of Main Street are what a lot of communities try to recreate." They recreate it through landscaping, or they recreate it through signage. We already have that framework. We don't need more what I call goulala. We need to emphasize the architecture that we have down there, and, and roof signs are illegal. And like Kathy Lishman said, it was a compromise-- And like Kathy Lishman said, it was a compromise, it was a compromise back in 2002, and it's still a compromise today. It was the best we could do at the time. And I, I would like to see this council continue down the path of enforcing the sign programs that we have, and, and request sign packages when people want to, want a different look for their project. They can do that, but then they have to go through the sign package, the sign package, the master sign package.
Hi.
Well, as part of the team that's been trying for years to bring our signs in compliance, I have to agree with Carol. We, we just can't keep saying, "Oh, it's okay." But we'll just let you go on this one. The pole sign that Kirk Smith was talking about has been brought up several times. It was all about pole signs. And we, and the only, and how, how, the compromise was, at the time, we allowed the signs to stay, we just made them, lower them.
Subsize.
And so, that's what that was all about. It wasn't the, you know, it was, it was totally different than this. And I, I'm going along with what the Planning Commission said, and also, you know, for the longest time, we didn't have a historic advisory commission. And we've established one now for this purpose, because nobody knew which direction to take. They are, because of our historic background of our town and everything, we have it now. I, I don't know, Sue, about Carol, but I do know that this, that practically word-for-word what she said is in this report, and it didn't come from her, it came from our staff. So I have to believe that what was said, what she said, is the truth. And I think we need to back them. That's why we, that's why we were so adamant in appointing this commission. It was a big brouhaha about windows, I think, that really cemented this thing in the historic district. But that's what they're there for, and they look into the historic history. And apparently, they did, they did their job, and they've reported to us. And I, like I say, we, we put them there for a reason, or we asked them to be there for a reason, and we have to go along with what they're saying as the truth. So, it says that the committee further mentioned that the roof sign is not an original historic feature of the building, as evidenced by a 1953 photo of downtown Plasterville provided by, it was Member Rogers, that visually showed the 301 and 305 Main Street buildings without a roof sign. They advised that the roof sign be removed. So, and you know, I have to take their advisory. So, that's my comment.
You have any comments?
Yeah, I have comments. Okay. So, if it's not original, if it's been there for 30 years instead of 50, and if it doesn't, there is nitpicky over if it's a historic monument with one roof, so technically, whatever. I think that what I would like to see is, if it has to come down, if that's the rule, okay, but I think that they are, the Taylors are doing work on that building, and I'm not sure that 60 days is enough time to get it down. Why would we force them? I mean, we're not proceeding with abatement proceedings on the JED sign. There, I mean, how long has it been there? I don't, I don't see what harm giving them extra time so that they can do it while they're up on the roof. If they can take it down cheaper, if, if they're gonna have to take it down. So I don't think, I think, I would like to see maybe 180 days, just so that they have a chance. It'd just so show good faith that they're working on our historic building, and if we're going to make them take it down, not require, not keep it in 60 days.
I guess I would, you know, I'd echo part of that. It's, but Michael said that they're going to replace the roof soon. I would assume at the same time you do the roof, it'd be the same time you don't take the sign down, because that would make sense. So I don't know if there's a permitting process on the roof. My understanding is there is, there is a permitting process, and I don't know what process they are in their building, but it would seem to me we could do it concurrent. But other than that, I would say that's a good time to bring it down when you're doing the roofing work. People are gonna be up there anyway with cranes or whatever. I don't have any questions of staff at this point. Look for a motion.
I make a motion that we deny the request of the current owners, follow the recommendations 1, 2, and 3, as in the staff report, except that we allow them an additional 120 days, making a total of 180 days.
I'll second that, if, but I'd just like to ask Pierre, if that's, is that amenable to you? The extension of time?
Yes. Staff concurs. We can certainly work with the Taylors. We've worked very well with them and their whole endeavor to rehabilitate the building. And so, they are gonna come in with additional permitting to re-roof the building, and at that time, it would be appropriate that when they re-roof it, it would not include a roof sign.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do you have any questions on that clarification, or the first and second move by Patton and seconded by Borelli? And with the, with the change, the only change is 180 days to complete the project. I'll call for the question, or just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous? So, thank you. Let's move on to item 11.2. And with that, we'll call the mayor back into the room, please.
Oh, that's okay. All right. 11.2. Adopt a resolution approving notices of cancellation effective December 31st of the lease agreements with Lamar Media Corporation, the CBS Outdoor. We're talking billboards. So, Mr. Morris, I turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of history on this. Some of you may know more about it than I do, but I'd like to give a little bit of history on these two billboards. We've actually been working on this for probably about six to eight months, at least, figuring out what the best thing was to do here. But going back, in February 2002, Caltrans did it seven parcels to the city relating to the Western Plasterville Interchange, Ray Lawyer Drive interchange projects, in order for, to give that property to the city in order for us to complete those, those projects, or that project. At that time, a year later, it was determined that one of those parcels contained two billboard signs that should have been given as part of the properties given to the city. Now, with that statement that you saw in my staff report, there is some, some confusion, and perhaps some misinformation, that perhaps those, the parcel that, the parcels that were, the billboards are on, were not, was not one of those parcels that was given to the city. And we're working through some issues related to that. The fact of the matter is, the rights to the billboards were given to the city in 2003 for our control and to have at that time. Since that time, the existing leases have run on the property, on the billboards, and we have not done a lot of work, not really any work we have to do, that we simply received the, the monthly rent for these two billboards. Recently, we were approached by a billboard company to state that there's probably potential for additional revenue, since those leases, one of the leases is very old, and that we should consider looking at renegotiating those leases. The first lease I'll talk about is with CBS Outdoor Advertising, formerly National Advertising Company. And the agreement began in 1996 with a 15-year term, which expired in 2010. With the expiration of the agreement, the lease operates on a year-to-year basis with a 90-day cancellation notice requirement. The lease pays $2,400 per year, or $200 per month. The second agreement was executed in 1998 between Caltrans and Palco, and had an initial term of five years, ending in 2003. Following the initial term, the agreement became a month-to-month lease, with all other provisions remaining in effect. The lease provides also for a 90-day termination notice. This pay, this lease pays $7,200 per year, or $600 a month. Lamar Media Corporation purchased the rights to the billboard from Palco Incorporated in 2005. The two lease agreements, as you can see, illustrates the disparity in the lease cost for those. And that's what came to our attention, to note that, yes, there probably is the potential to realize more revenue if we are going to have those, those billboards there. The urgency to this item is the fact that, as I mentioned, one of the leases, the CBS Corporation, or CBS Outdoor Advertising lease expires on an annual basis, which is December 31st of this year, we determined. Therefore, in order to cancel that one, we need to give 90 days' notice prior to December 31st, which gives us until October 1st to do, to do that, if we want to cancel those. So, based on that, we determined that it would probably be in the city's best interest if we're going to continue the billboards, to put out an RFP for management of those, those signs. And so, we have prepared, you have as an attachment here, an RFP that could be used to achieve that. Now, a couple other pieces to note. The billboard, the billboards, we determined in looking at how the new ramps for Ray Lawyer Drive would go, go when they're constructed, it was initially determined that they would, the billboards would not be in conflict with those. If you look at the map that is attached here, it shows the design there. It shows the eastbound on-ramp is actually a cloverleaf design that would, not a cloverleaf, but a rounded design that would circle back on the, would be the west side of the freeway around to go east. And then the west, or the eastbound off-ramp also comes up on that side, which would actually put the billboard in between those two ramps, as you can see. Now, technically, that is, would not be a conflict, we determined. However, we're fairly confident in talking to Caltrans that they would require those either to be eliminated, or moved when this goes in, simply because you need to get access to those billboards in order to change the sign face and et cetera. And Caltrans would not like giving us an easement in order for the companies to get on there to change, change the sign face. And for that reason, we feel fairly strongly that those would have to be moved at some point to a new location when those interchange improvements are done.
In that area? In that same?
We would, we would look at, there would be probably some flexibility there, but yes, in that same area. So, with that, we still feel that we should, if the council wants to move forward this, that we should go ahead with the RFP and cancel those contracts, in order to us to attempt to realize the additional revenue that might, that would be available from new leases. At the same time, we have added language into the RFP that states that it is likely that the signs will have to be moved in the future, and that included in their cost should be a proposal for who would be responsible for moving the sign, and what that cost would be. Each company that gives us a proposal will then be compared, and we will determine what is the most efficient, the most, the best deal for the city in that process. So, we've had a lot of discussions, including with our city attorney, as far as how we move forward with this. We do feel that it is possible to move forward with the RFP to cancel those. It is our assumption that nothing would be changed in far, as far as moving the signs right now, because we are a ways away from that. However, you will note that the next item, I believe it is, on our agenda regarding Western Plasterville Interchanges, a discussion talking about changing our order of those on-ramps, off-ramps that we are looking at on Ray Lawyer Drive, and would move the west, the eastbound off-ramp, thank you, to, to an earlier date rather than a later date. So it may affect removal, removal or moving of these signs earlier than we think. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. You have all of the information, I believe, in the, the attached agreements and the potential RFP for your information.
Thank you. You bet. Actually, before we get to council questions, Mr. Yule, can we get you to turn the air conditioning down? Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Hagan.
Temperature up?
Temperature up, yeah. It's cold. Thank you very much.
Ladies are cold.
Ladies are cold. All right. Vice Mayor Hagan, questions?
A couple of things. One is, my concern was, one, if we were to release these, and with this construction going, coming on, I'm not sure there's too many other locations where a billboard would be appropriate, because I believe the scenic highway of Highway 50 starts at about the Plasterville Drive undercrossing. So, I'm not so sure that these two billboards would qualify for locations closer to town. And it's, you know, basically, the rest of town for billboards is from, from the creek, Weber Creek up. So that's private property. So, I personally don't think there's gonna be much interest in long-term leases for this type of a thing. And I do find it, I found it ironic that we were looking at the scenic highway concerns of a rooftop building, at the same time we were looking at billboards. So, I, I actually did find it very challenging to be looking at both these at the same time. I understand the value in outdoor advertising, and I believe that there are some, some things to be gained by outdoor advertising. I also think that there are, there's a place for it. I don't believe we have any space left in the city of Plasterville for outdoor advertising based upon the scenic highway, and the location of these off-ramps that will be. At best, I think we might be able to get some extensions of those at the existing sites. And then, when they go to bid, the understanding would be that they come down. Because, once they start that, you're right, they're not gonna be able to be, access these for repairs, sign changes, and so forth. So I don't see a big competition for this particular site. And I think it may be an opportunity for us to move proactively, along with our scenic highways and the other things we're doing in town, to say, "These two are gonna come down once we start construction of those eastbound off-ramps." The other, my other concern would be, it's not just the location and servicing those, but the infrastructure, to extend that infrastructure out during construction, and then during placement of that construction. The additional cost of the engineering and the, bringing that power out to that facility doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hagan. Councilmember Wilkins, questions for staff at this point?
I have no.
All right. Councilmember Borelli.
Well, I think Carl brought up a lot of good points. I was just going on existing, and I have to tell you that those two signs have bothered me for a long, long time. I think they're just ridiculous, the way they're placed side by side with two different advertisements. And it's, you know, it's kinda confusing. To me, it's just kinda, it looks cluttered. And that was one of the things, is if we do stay with this, and I was glad to hear you say they're gonna have to be moved, and I was thinking if we could configure them in a, if, if we do keep them, if we could configure them in a different way. But that, that was my only comment, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Patton.
I also had a conflict with this being on the agenda. And, but, all I kept seeing was, oh, we're gonna give this up with an RFP to some external advertising person. The next thing you know, we're gonna have one of those triangular monster billboards like they have down in Shingle Springs, and that's just not my intention at all. I remember there was an abandoned billboard across the freeway, just east of Ray Lawyer Drive, that the city eventually had removed. I don't know if Pierre remembers it, but, and then, the only reason we have the two billboards in the Weber Creek Canyon right there is because the city kinda traded the Harvey's billboard that used to be downtown by the Welcome to Plasterville for that site. So, I mean, we, there's been attempts to make our community more, to look better. And, and I think this is a perfect opportunity to say, "Look, you know, we don't want to look like everywhere USA." Certainly, I'm not a fan of billboards. I'm not a fan of any, I haven't seen any that I like yet. So, as far as I'm concerned.
You're too young to know the Burma Shake.
Oh, no, I know the Burma Shake. So anyways, as far as.
I don't consider that a billboard.
As far as I'm concerned, it would not hurt my feelings at all if these went away.
All right. Thank you. I guess the only, the question I have is, what are we looking? I guess the only, the question I have is, what are we looking at timing-wise for the ramps and all of that? I mean, I know with this new, especially this proposed.
That's probably our next item, but Nate, can you respond to that?
Just briefly.
I'll be talking about it more, a couple items from now, but 2016, 2017, so as early as June 2016, we're looking at.
All right. Thank you. And I know that the billboards are in a current state of some disrepair. What is the ability of the city to repair and maintain them on our own?
Well, in the agreements, the leases are required to repair those. So, I believe that we could go back on them and require them to bring them up to acceptable state.
So, what happens if we cancel the contract with the leasing agents? Do the billboards stay with us?
That's correct.
Okay. No?
No.
John, look.
Not that the lessee would necessarily want them, but they may very well have the right to remove those structures.
Okay.
Should be good.
Okay. Well, the point, the point I was having is, until the highway gets, gets built out, I absolutely, I agree with my fellow council members, I hate coming to town and seeing a Budweiser commercial and a Nash, you know, beer and whatever it is that relates, that does not relate to our community. It's visual pollution. That if we were to entertain the idea of keeping the billboard, at least maybe one of them, until this interchange is, is brought forth, I can see perhaps economic impact, economic value to our downtown, having, you know, a billboard advertising Historic Main Street or Placerville with, you know, a beautiful photograph like we have on the Placerville Downtown website or something like that. And short of that, I think I would also be in favor of removing those. So, yeah, that's just my personal concern.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Couple of things I just wanted to, first of all, let me state that if you want to remove them, I don't think it's a big concern of mine. It is a little bit of revenue on an annual basis, but I understand the conflict. I agree, we did however feel that we needed to bring this back if we were going to consider it. I apologize it was on this agenda tonight, but it's kind of a tough one. But if that's the way you want to go, I understand, and it does make sense in a lot of ways. I just want to respond to a couple of comments of Councilmember Hagan's. We have looked at a couple of those parcels that we were given by the county, that would be potential sites where you could put a billboard and still have it up. And you're right, the, to the, they're both located to the west of where they're, a little bit to where they're currently located. To the east, you're getting into the scenic corridor, and no, we wouldn't be able to move it in that direction. And there was one more thing I was going to respond to. It slipped my mind, but that, that was the main one, is that we, if you wanted to keep those, we did look at a couple of sites that we feel would be suitable for the billboards, that are currently city-owned property, would not be in conflict with the future improvements to Ray Lawyer, Fornie, et cetera. So, there is a potential to do that. Again, but I want to emphasize, I understand the need to maybe get rid of those. I had to negotiate and pay to get rid of a sign in another community I was in, and I fully understand that, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Borelli.
Would it behoove us to, to keep them? I mean, to, you know, to not totally release them, to wait and see? I don't know. What are we doing?
Well, one other option you could possibly have would be simply to renegotiate the current agreements. Now, since they are on a, on an automatic renewal, I'm not sure exactly what incentive they would have to do that. But that was something you could do, is leave them under the current contracts, just renegotiate those contracts with the understanding and our ability to cancel those and get rid of those once the Ray Lawyer Drive interchange goes through.
Is it like year-to-year now?
One of them, the CBS one is year-to-year, the Lamar one is month-to-month. Both require 90-day notice, however.
So, what, what harm would be done then if we just don't do anything? And if we just keep on that extension?
None. We would continue to receive that money. However, we need to note that we need to be prepared, because the one has a one-year term. We need to make sure that we monitor that and give the proper notice 90 days ahead of the expiration of that year.
Maybe after we hear Nate's presentation, then we'll get a better feeling about when it's going to happen.
When, yeah. It's still a while, but.
Right. I mean, he was saying 16, so that's a couple of years. I mean, that would certainly give us a, you know, we'd have a year to.
I guess my recommendation would be, if you want to continue those, you still allow staff or recommend to staff that we go back and try to renegotiate, because the one cost, as you can see, is really out of line with what the other one is. The other option perhaps would be to go ahead and go out on the RFP, but put on there with the understanding that, you know, they'll continue as is until they're eliminated, and see what advertisers come in with a potential bid. One of the things that brought this whole thing up was, the company that brought it up to us is a local company. It's not a national company necessarily. And, and actually, we looked at, and there's actually two local companies that may have interest in submitting a proposal. And I, when I say local, I'm in Eldorado County. So, there is a potential for that, doing it that way also, to go ahead and go on the RFP, however, change it to note that these may be limited to only two or three, four years. We don't know. And they would submit their proposals based on that.
And we'd still have no control over the content, because they would be responsible for that.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Isn't there some language in the content regarding public acceptability and so forth? I mean, because there's just a couple up the road that.
Like the Bunny Ranch?
The Bunny Ranch.
Bunny Ranch, that CBS, which is the same company, just had to remove because of public pressure.
There is some language that talks about that in the contract, however, it's, it's a fine line that you have to look at and what you can restrict.
Okay, great. Well, let's, at this time, open public comment up on this issue. Please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Michael Drobish, Placerville. Seems to be city sign ordinance night. So, billboards and off-premise ad copy are expressly prohibited in the sign ordinance. So, hoping for some consistency here. Equal application of the law. I was just going through the sign ordinance again today, so I wrote down, it wasn't planned on it, I wrote down the 14 prohibited signs in the sign ordinance. I paraphrased it, so, one, flashing, two, moving, three, A-boards, four, dilapidated, abandoned, or dangerous to health and public safety. Dangerous to health and safety, like town hall sign out here that's ready to fall on someone's head. Five, fence, pole, rocks, natural features. Six, mobile signs. Seven, pennants and banners. Eight, oversized balloons. Nine, commercial billboards and off-premise ad signs. Ten, wind signs. Eleven, PA systems. Twelve, dangerous illuminated signs. Thirteen, roof signs. And fourteen, illuminated canopies or fascia unless approved. So, if you don't like the billboards, here's your opportunity. If they have to be moved per Caltrans, oops, you can't get a new permit. Gone. I'd like to see them gone. You know, we've had how many trees wiped out through there? All that's gone, and now we're going to have this naked, ugly entrance to Placerville, except for two prominent, brand-new billboards, which you will have no control over ad copy. So, this is the chance. Just, they have to move, oops, they're gone. And please apply the sign ordinance equally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kirk Smith of Placerville. Just to echo the comments just made, I think for consistency, your policy regarding billboards should be consistent with the spirit of the laws related to signs on roofs and the like. Again, I think for the historic area, it'd be great to move towards having signs made of wood, much as it is for a lot of historic communities around here, and again, like Carmel, where you want people to get out, get on the street, walk around, and see the businesses and the special services that are offered here. I wasn't offended by some two-by-three-foot sign on the top of the Herrick Building, but I'm certainly offended by all the billboards. I just invite you to imagine when you come up from Folsom Boulevard, just below Folsom, and compare the left side with the right side. The left side was developed by humans, and the right side was developed by God, and I kind of like the one on the right. Likewise, when you get past Ray Lawyer Drive and you come into the city, it is so gorgeous. I love that undeveloped land. So, you can have signs that say, "Welcome to Placerville," and you have these great photographs, but I think the scenery, when you come here, says the same thing. It's like seeing that wonderful sign that said, without words, "Welcome," otherwise known as a Red Cross sign. And it's the same thing that the wordy sign immediately across the street says with a whole bunch of words, "Welcome to Hangtown." If you keep the scenery that says Eldorado County, the, the beauty of the area, that says it much more effectively. So, to be consistent, get rid of these billboards. We don't need them. The county screwed up when they somehow let some get in before. And then you're going to have the Bunny Ranch Bar and heaven knows what else. You don't need it. I think it was Ms. Borelli who pointed out to me about how pole signs aren't really very effective. And as I was driving up from Oakland today, and I needed gas, all they needed was these discreet little signs along the highway that tell you Rest Drop, Gas Station, et cetera. I don't need the name of Arco, Texaco, et cetera. That's all they needed. I didn't need the big pole signs. So, same thing related to billboards. You don't need them. We don't need them.
Thank you. Take your time, Kathy.
Kathy Lishman again. I'm recovering from a broken bone in my foot.
Oh, we're sorry.
And it's better, but it's worse. I admire you and commend you for having concerns about even having those billboards there. And I was on the council when the Harvey's sign came down, and that was really monumental. And I'm sorry it had to go into Weber Creek. But a lot of times, the billboards don't even advertise anything that relates to the city at all, and it, and it is visual blight. And this is a golden opportunity to get rid of those, and to have a goal to have no more billboards in the city limits. In Sacramento, they're enormous, and then, you know, they're just enormous, and then they get bigger. And then the sign people figure out ways. I wish that we could have a, gather signatures to put something on, on the ballot for the state that didn't allow billboards, because they really don't help any community. And like I said, what they advertise is of no benefit to the city. And the money, it's not that much, and it's not worth it.
Thank you.
Amen. Great Carl Borelli, or, not.
The other Carl.
Carl Hagan. Anyway, Councilmember Hagan, good for you. Yes, I agree. How about an RFP for removal of these darn things? They are ugly. They are not a good invitation to come to Placerville. They're the opposite. Let's get rid of them.
Thank you, Sue. At this point, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for additional comments and direction. Councilmember Wilkins, would you like to weigh in on this issue?
Sure. I think we should get rid of them. I liked what Kirk Callan Smith said, where we have, why would we take a picture of our hillside and then put it here so you could look at it when you could just look at the hillside?
Vice Mayor Hagan?
I think it's done enough damage.
Councilmember Borelli or Patton? All right. Anyone want to entertain a motion?
Could I?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what your motion is, but if, one more comment, the city attorney reminded me of one option, if you want us to try and renegotiate those, is to go ahead and cancel them, and we'll use that as the renegotiation with the current companies.
I'm not hearing much renegotiation.
Okay. Just get rid of them now. Okay. I just want to make sure.
And that's the way I feel. I, I'm, if, if the rest of the council wants them to go, that's fine, but I don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face if we've got a couple of years that we can get out of them and get that income. I mean, if it, you know, Placerville is not flush, as we all know, so every little bit helps. So, I, so I just want to, I want to do the right thing. And if we can renegotiate for a couple of years till we need them to go down, then I'm all for, you know. But I, I don't know what to agree to.
I have a concern with the current contracts to make sure we don't end up with a couple of blank billboard former signs.
And maybe leaving us with expense.
Right. I would like to make sure that the current contracts, that not only is their lease up, but then they have 90 days to remove all of the remnants.
Is there a demolition clause?
There is, and, let me just take, I read it, and I want to make sure I read it in both of them, because I know that in one of them, for sure, I read where the tenant or lessee has the obligation to remove. And it's in, it's in that one? It's in both of them then?
Well, I like Sue Rodman's idea of asking for an RFP to remove the sign, the billboards, rather than waiting three or four more years.
Both, both agreements have requirement that the tenant remove the property.
Okay.
There doesn't seem to be a timeframe on it, which means that it would be interpreted as a reasonable time.
But you would have to let the contract run its term, correct?
Well, the.
For 90 days.
Yeah. The one contract, which is a month-to-month, basically, just simply because it, normally in a month-to-month, you give them 30 days' notice, but in this particular agreement, it provides for a longer notice of 90 days. That one, we can give the 90 days' notice pretty much any time. The other one, because it runs on an annual basis, you can only terminate it 90, you give notice 90 days before the end of that year, which is December 31st. So, that's why the city manager is bringing this to you now, because if we want to do something with that one, we've got to give them their notice by October 1st. Otherwise, you're going to be stuck with them for another year.
So, I'll make the motion that we give them cancellation notice effective December 31st and give them 90 days to remove everything after that date.
I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Hagan, a second by Councilmember Patton. All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries, and billboards are gone. So, I definitely agree with that direction. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, we move on to item 11.3, adopt a resolution awarding construction contract to Doug Veerkamp, general engineering for the Cedar Ravine Main Relocation Project. And I believe you have to.
I need to excuse myself, because that runs right through my property.
All right. We will excuse Councilmember Wilkins. Thank you. All right. Mr. Ravas.
Actually, I'll take this one, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Nate.
Members of the council. So, yes, we have a construction project to remove approximately 175 feet of eight-inch and four-inch, they're parallel lines that are running in the creek at Cedar Ravine, and Roland is the downstream terminus and upstream, about 175 feet toward Upper Darlington. We completed design, you know, a number of months ago, and right-of-way acquisition was on a couple of meetings ago, final acquisition for easements, and advertised August 14th, open bids a week ago today, and received two bids, and Doug Veerkamp was low, and all their documents are in order, and the bid looks good. So, I'm recommending award of contract to them. The project has a tight timeline. We're here late in the season, and that's, in part, we get the lowest flow in the creek, so it's the best time that the creek is dry. There's a creek crossing involved with this project, they can dig that up, but they are held to a six, 30-day working, 30 working days, which would include Saturdays. So, the, the goal is to complete the creek crossing prior to October 15th and finish up the work prior to October 25th. Due to the tough digging conditions that are expected in the area, the reason that the eight-inch line is in the creek is, is thought to be that they encountered rock trying to get it in the road and, and went out into the creek to get the line in. So, given that, there's heavy equipment, and it's recommended that that section of the road be closed, and there's heavy traffic on Cedar Ravine. Two-way traffic control is not likely to operate well. There'd be heavy queuing, potentially, you know, in the southbound direction, you'd be see queuing back up toward Main Street. So, staff is recommending a detour be put in place. I provided an exhibit of the detour, and the hours would be 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. to allow for morning and evening. And the hours would be 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. to allow for morning and evening commutes. And I would coordinate with emergency responders, post office, school districts, things of that nature, to make sure everybody's aware of the circumstance. So that is part of the recommendation, is to authorize a temporary closure, daytime closure of Cedar Ravine and the detour. So that concludes my report. Now, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nate. I think we are all very happy that we are having another section of the sewer removed from the creek. That's exciting. Any members of the council have questions for staff at this point?
I do.
Councilmember Borelli.
I'm remembering all the problems we had with the company that did the Placerville, I mean, the Highway 50, and they claimed that they didn't know we had rock. I think Doug, being a local person, knows we have rock, and we're not going to run into anything like that that happened on Highway 50 project. And also, along, because you were saying that it's going to require probably some heavy duty. What's going to happen, like, those are, there's a lot of old homes along there if we, you know, cause cracks in their walls and stuff?
We're not anticipating with the hammering. That's the approach that we're anticipating, is hammering on the rock, and that typically doesn't cause severe vibration.
Are they going to blast?
No blasting is allowed. It's in the specs. And the rock, we considered working the specs two ways. One is a bid item for soil and a bid item for rock excavation and separate those. But there's always a dispute as to what is hard rock? What is rock and that threshold? So we decided with this contract to write the specs that the material will be removed no matter what its makeup. So we're seeing that in the bid prices. They're a little higher per lineal foot on the pipeline, but it's a known commodity. They're required to get it out of there for those prices. So we shouldn't have any cost overrun, so to speak, but it's, that said, it's still, it's built into the original price. It's a little higher.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? No? At this point, I'll open it up for public comment. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Ms. Rodman.
Yes, Sue Rodman, Major H Committee. This has been on our agenda since the Major H Committee first began. And so we are thrilled. This doesn't include any Major H funds in this particular section, but we are still absolutely delighted to see it going forward. Getting the sewer out of the creek has been a top priority.
Great. Thank you. All right. At that point, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for motion.
I so move. I don't want any more discussion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Borelli, and I'll second it. And with that, let's see, we need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hagan?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Patton?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And with that, we've had some very patient presenters. Thank you so much.
Tricia's.
Oh, Tricia. Sorry. Thank you. Wait for another council member to return. With that, we're on item 11.4, talking about a supplemental design for the Ray Lawyer Drive interchange. And is this Nate or Mr. Ravas taking this? Two different?
It's me again.
All right. You're up, Nate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again, members of the council. So my next report is on the Western Placerville Interchanges Project. You should be very familiar. We've come periodically. The last visit was in February of this year, where we took, and I'll just give a brief overview for the benefit of those remaining in the audience, but the Western Placerville Interchanges Project is improvements to the two interchanges, Ray Lawyer Drive and Placerville Drive, as a combined overall project to improve the operations in that area where we have, you know, current poor levels of service at Placerville Drive and Fair Lane and anticipated growth in the Ray Lawyer Drive, you know, south extension area. So I'm sorry, I zoomed in on that side here. But here before you is what was approved by the city council when the environmental impact report was certified in 2005. And it was alternative D, Delta, included a roundabout at Fair Lane and Placerville Drive and signals at the other locations you see there on the exhibit. And these are just the attachments from your staff reports. I'll just use them on the big screen while I'm talking. So we have, the city has contracted with Dockin Engineering, who is in the audience tonight, to perform design. And Liz Diamond is project manager, and Juan Ramos is in the audience, lead brains behind the design. And you'll see some good refinements here that have come shortly. So also, here with us is Patrick McGrady, who is with Reed Middleton. They're roundabout experts. Patrick's seen a gazillion, is that the right word? Many, many roundabouts built, and is very familiar. He's an expert in the field, so we're happy to have him here. He'll give a presentation here in a little bit. So the, I'll go to the next slide and talk a little bit about the timing that came up under the billboards presentation. Currently, we are under construction of this section in red, which is called our Phase 1A. We're constructing an on-ramp from Ray Lawyer Drive and an auxiliary lane connecting to the off-ramp at Placerville Drive. And concurrent with that project, our improvements to Fair Lane to shift it over and make room for the auxiliary lane. And what you see here in green is our Phase 1B. And back in February, authorization number four with Dockin approved, getting shelf-ready plans for bike lanes, sidewalks, that would connect the existing sidewalk at the Government Center to the west at County Fair Plaza Shopping Center. And we're anticipating that there's going to be a healthy chunk of funding available through the CMAC program, the congestion mitigation, air quality, coming up here through the Eldorado County Transportation Commission. I'm hearing on the order of $8 to $10 million. So this is a project that's eligible, and looking forward to putting this one in. The timing is working well with finalizing design. So that's looking promising. The next phases that are programmed for construction are these light blue, dark blue, and yellow. And, I can make that go away. Those three components called Phase 2A, 2B, and 2C are, does that make it clear? Nope. Don't want that. Are programmed for the fiscal year 1617. About $5.4 million is programmed to those. Since the Eldorado County Transportation Commission made the action to program those elements, further traffic analysis and consultation with Caltrans has shown that the westbound off-ramp is not the preferred alternative, rather, the eastbound off-ramp for a number of reasons. One, it fits within our fund, well, it's less expensive and could fit within our funding. The westbound off-ramp is extremely expensive. It comes over steep terrain. There'd be a tremendous amount of retaining wall work to be done with that. The other reason is the traffic analysis.
You explain that a little bit more. I don't understand, I don't understand what you're, would you show us, or show me?
The westbound ramp?
Yeah.
The light blue, I'm sorry, is the westbound ramp.
Okay. So what are you proposing, what are they proposing changing?
We've looked at the traffic analysis, and it's shown that an eastbound off-ramp here, and, sorry, I hope everybody can see this, but here are the billboards that was in a couple of items ago. And the eastbound off-ramp would come through here. So rather than program, one of the actions before you is to request the EDC TC reprogram the eastbound off as for the 1617 STIP cycle. And those are, like I said, for three reasons. Available funding, the traffic shows the eastbound ramp to be more effective, at least in the near term, the first 10 years. It's, they're about comparable on a 10-year horizon with projections. But the immediate benefits in the near term are there with the eastbound off-ramp.
So you're saying that the brown, the brown off-ramp is the one that you want, that you're suggesting program sooner rather than the baby blue off-ramp?
Right. Well, one of these gray, it's, this one will work, this one here.
That's gray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. And then this on-ramp here would not be contemplated. That would be built later. So what you would end up with is a partial interchange with this red and this gray. And that's preferable, that's the third reason. It's preferred by Caltrans that a partial interchange be one half of the diamond, not both in the same direction. So available funding, traffic, and Caltrans requirement.
Get rid of that loop?
Just not do it yet.
No, just not do it yet.
Oh, just not do it.
Do the red one, which is going on right now, and then do that gray one or brown one.
And brown one. Looks brown to me.
Okay, brown one.
It's gray on our map, on our map.
Okay, so I wanted to include that discussion, the third recommendation at this time. Moving forward, back in February, the council authorized Dockin to proceed under authorization number four, which included additional traffic analysis at Placerville Drive, Fornie Road, Fair Lane area. And as a result of that analysis, and additionally, at that meeting, we brought up the issue of the County Fair Plaza. And on the approved alternative D, Fair Lane was contemplated to be swept into the roundabout to achieve, you know, pointing it toward the center of the circle and turning radii for truck movements off of the freeway, westbound off-ramp there. So when the County Fair Plaza saw this exhibit, they were losing too much parking, and we had, they had proposed a building here at the southwest corner. And that's actually been submitted at staff level. They're proceeding with that, additional building. So Dockin went back to the drawing board, and this is where Juan worked his magic. Revised the roundabout to, in red here are retaining walls, so there's a significant amount of retaining wall work needed. The differential in grade from Placerville Drive to the parking lot of County Fair Plaza is, you know, on the order of 30 feet. So there are significant retaining walls needed, but as you can see, question?
When I was looking at this, Nate, is it true that if I was going to get off of US-50 and I wanted to get onto Fair Lane, do I even need to touch the roundabout?
No, you have your own dedicated lane there. And that's-
So I did read it right. Thank you.
That's provided not for your convenience, but for trucks to be able to make that turn. They wouldn't be able to if they had to come into the circle. But it does provide a nice, you know, that's currently one of the problems with getting off of the freeway there is waiting for that gap in traffic just to make a turn onto Fair Lane. And the signal is-
Yeah, it is.
You said something about this has some very steep or tall retaining walls, whatever you want to call them, because the slope there is fairly significant. But they're the, they're steep retaining walls regardless of whether we put a signalized interchange or that. Isn't that correct? I mean-
That'd be true, yeah. The signalized option includes widening of, let's see, do we have?
That's, I mean, in general, I just, I was making a general statement, not, I don't need the calculations right now.
In general, that's very true, yeah. Here's a little glimpse at the signalized alternative that we looked at in the EIR. You can see the distance from the corner, the parking to Placerville Drive is pretty healthy. So that wall there would start coming down in height, but right here up against the corner would be very comparable, that 20-foot potential, you know, 15 to 20-foot wall. I don't know, do we have a height yet? Liz Diamond and Juan, feel free to chime in or sit comfortably, whichever.
One's never quite sure whether they should get up and come up here when told that. But anyway, yeah, the two alternatives in terms of terrain are very similar. The intersection will come up in grade as we build new improvements, whether there's signals or not. We're trying to bring those grades together, but it's spreading out, and you have quite a bit of a drop there now. So those kinds of things are very similar in the two projects. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't get hung up on that as your deciding factor.
All right. Thank you, Liz.
Before we move off of this slide, can I ask another question? So the gold box that's to, that's up above the signal to the right, I believe that's where the Century 21 real estate office is at. What is that? Is that more bigger road?
That is the driveway conform. Currently, Helmerick Lane accesses Placerville Drive right here with the, we're raising the grade of Placerville Drive, too, by about eight feet, eight feet is it, six to eight feet? So that driveway is, would no longer be possible to conform there, nor would it be allowed by Caltrans to have that in such a close proximity. So it's going to be combined together almost as a frontage driveway with these other commercial driveways, and it would be accessed.
And that driveway right there is to the car lot, is that correct?
Right. This is the Thompsons here, Century 21, and Helmerick Lane goes down.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
And then I should note, too, with the signalized alternative, the bridge is required to have four lanes and with a wider structure. And with the roundabout alternative, it's a three-lane configuration, one lane in the southbound direction and two lanes in the northbound direction. In conjunction with that revised geometrics, I mentioned the traffic was looked at again, and it came to light that the addition of a roundabout at Low High and Fornie Road would have superior operating characteristics over a signal. Actually, it would be two signals. The addition of a roundabout at this location precludes the need to have a signal at Fornie and Placerville Drive, which is a difficult left-turn movement. So the idea is that this intersection would be left, the left turn off of Fornie onto Fornie would be allowed, but it would be raised, curb median, and only a right turn would be allowed here. And they could go northbound by going down to the circle and following it up that way. The benefits over the signal are in terms of safety, traffic throughput, air quality, and reduced maintenance costs over the long term with signals or, you know, electricity and ongoing maintenance. That is the contemplated configuration of these two intersections. To make the change at Low High and Fornie would require some sort of change to the EIR, and that could be done in a couple of ways. There could be an amendment issued. It wouldn't be circulated publicly. It would just go in the file and document any visual impacts, traffic changes, air quality, things of that nature. The other avenue is a supplemental EIR, which would be produced and circulated for public review and comment. And staff feels that the supplemental EIR would be the appropriate choice in this circumstance. And so that's, item one on your recommendation is to authorize the preparation of that document. And that wouldn't approve the roundabout at this location, but it would allow the study and the circulation of the document and responding to any comments that may come up. I had an email from Jackie Ngo about how are bicycles being accommodated through here when she saw this staff report. So, you know, comments from, you know, pedestrian and bicycle advocates or any sort of concerns. So we feel that's the approach to take. And with that, I would like to hand over the controls to Patrick. And so I'd like to-
Good evening, Mr. McGrady.
Good evening. Councilmembers, your honor, and thank you so much for someone's day. And I consider this the most exciting part of the evening, myself. This is lovely. Well, actually, Reed Middleton's been, first saw this project, it was back in about 2005. And then, once we started, we were able to get involved in it, and we're working the redesigns in order to get the roundabout out of the parking lot.
Thank you.
And that's one thing, it's fun, roundabout design is so much fun because it's a performance-based design. It's not just a code-based design where you go take numbers out of charts and graphs out of your design manuals. But right now, what I've been asked to do is just to kind of talk a bit about roundabouts, just a little bit in general. And when you have questions as we go through this, do speak up. And this is an example of a core, roundabout corridor on an interchange. And I'll be coming back to this- And I'll be coming back to this very roundabout in just a couple of minutes, and show you some video and talk some more specifics of it. But when the roundabouts become another tool in our toolbox, and it's a wonderful tool, and that many agencies across the country have embraced them to the point where they say, "Well, before you can put a traffic signal in on an intersection, demonstrate that roundabout's not appropriate." But let's, I want to distinguish a little bit difference on how roundabout functions from what I'll call a typical intersection today. And then, what it is when we're approaching this intersection, as you see it, every approach, when you come into the intersection, you have three choices. You can turn left, you can go straight, and you can turn right. And that is true for all of the approaches. And every place that these lines cross, these are conflict points. And what we do in transportation at our intersections, we try to come up with a civil means of controlling the conflict points. And we'll typically, you might do that initially by adding some stop signs on minor approaches, or making it an always-stop sign, and, you know, then everybody stops and takes their turn. And it works well in that fashion, but it's incredibly inefficient. And then, typically, the next step is to go to a traffic signal, where I can use greens, yellows, reds, walks, and don't-walks to artificially create gaps in different movements. And that's a kind of a sequential process that the intersection works in. So you can see, and you don't need to count these, I just want you to see that there are many of them. And then we also add to here, we have the pedestrian conflict points with every one of these vehicle paths. And in my profession, I get to look at a lot of collision reports. And it's extremely rare to read about a pedestrian or a bicyclist being struck by a vehicle that's run a red light, say, and say the vehicle, we have a northbound vehicle here, would run a red light and strike a pedestrian or a bicyclist crossing on a perpendicular path. I'll try not to zap you here. What, where the collisions occur with pedestrians and bicyclists are with the motor vehicle turning, making right turns and left turns. And in the, right in the vicinity of where I live, we've had three fatalities of pedestrians, whereas a case where a motor vehicle's sitting at a red light, and there's a pedestrian standing on the corner at that vehicle's right front fender. And the motor's looking to the, is waiting to make, wants to make a right on red, so that motor's head is looking to the left, you know, looking for that gap in the traffic. And so when that gap in the traffic comes and presents itself, when you watch vehicle drivers making right turns, right on reds, you'll notice that the vehicle is rolling as the head is coming back around. The head doesn't come back around first, and this goes into the user behavior. And so what occurred on these three occasions was that there's a red light and don't-walk, looking for a gap in the traffic from the left to make a right on red. And right as that gap presented itself, and the vehicle starts rolling, the light turns green, the pedestrian gets a walk, and that pedestrian does not look over their left shoulder to see what that car's doing or not doing. And we had those three fatalities. The other scenario, the turning scenario, is when you have a vehicle sitting, say, in a left-turn pocket, and you're waiting to make that permitted left turn. Sometimes you'll get an arrow initially, so it's a protected left, but then you'll go to a green ball or a flashing red-yellow arrow. And at that point, you're waiting there, watching the opposing traffic, the conflicting traffic, and waiting for a gap that you're comfortable with to make that left turn in. But the longer you sit there, your gap acceptance, it starts shrinking, and it gets smaller, and it gets smaller, until finally, there's a, you know, there's a gap coming up, and, oh, I'm taking this one. And you're getting, you're starting to edge up across the stop line, and you're going to time it, and the gap presents itself, and you're ready to roll through it. But do you make a conscious decision to look to your left, to see if there's not a pedestrian, a bicycle, a stroller, something in that crosswalk that you're about to turn left over? And if you are, you should get gold stars on the side of your car, because it's a rare occurrence. And a gentleman I work with rides fourteen miles one way to work. And since I've known Tony, he's been hit three times on his bicycle. Two of them was that very scenario I described to you, where a vehicle's making a permitted left, and they, and, you know, they had their gap in the motor vehicle traffic, they did not look to see that he was approaching on, in his bicycle. So that's typically, when you get those turning modes, motor vehicles, that's where we get the collisions, and the injuries and fatalities start pedestrians and bicyclists. So now, to make a contrast, let's look at that same intersection with a roundabout in it. In this case, when each vehicle approaches, they do one thing, they turn right into the circulating lane. Every approach. And so then the number of conflict points you can see is reduced tremendously. And what's exciting about this as well is the fact that which of the conflict points are mitigated, which ones are eliminated. It's all those conflict points where you get right-angle collisions, T-bones, head-on collisions, those are gone. They do not exist anymore. So it's, the geometry in a well-designed roundabout will not permit those types of collisions. And also, another thing we do at the roundabout is that we pull the pedestrian crossing back from the, away from the circulating lane, at least one car length. So that when a motor vehicle is approaching, when a motor vehicle's approaching, say, northbound, they come up, they deal with pedestrians first, and then when they get up to the point where they're looking to their left for a gap in the circulating traffic, there's no pedestrian on the right front fender, the pedestrians are behind them. So we segregate those conflict points. So we've gotten rid of three-quarters of the conflict points, and then we segregate the pedestrian conflict points from the vehicle conflict points. And as a result of this, the Federal Highway Administration, they did a study on fifty-five sites of four-way intersections. Some were always-stop controls, some were traffic signals, and these were intersections where the existing control was replaced by a roundabout. And what they found is that the number of total collisions was reduced by thirty-five percent. And that's good, that's wonderful. However, the remarkable part of it, that the injury collisions were reduced by three-quarters, you know, three-quarters of them were gone. And part of the reason for this is when you have, I'm going to back up one, whoops. On a well-designed roundabout, when you're, the heart and soul of that roundabout is speed control. And when a well-designed roundabout, you have that entering traffic, the speed of that entering vehicle and the speed of that circulating vehicle are very close. On a single-lane roundabout, it should be, what, within six miles an hour? So say you do have a vehicle that does not yield as they should, and they just roll into it, and they collide with that circulating vehicle. One, they're going about the same speed, and two, they're pointed about the same direction. So you can see, that's why the severity goes away, that's part of it. So now, we always like when we're having a roundabout constructed, especially if it's a first roundabout in a community, we say, "I want to see one that's just exactly what you're going to put in my community." Well, I don't have just exactly, but I have really close. And I'm going to show you two examples. One is, this is in Union Gap, Washington. Does anybody remember Gary Puckett and the Union Gap? Yeah, well, that's where he's from, that's where he got the name for his band. That's a trivia question for tonight. And so, you can see here, here's the off-ramp, comes down, there's the on-ramp just opposite. And then we have this frontage road. And this is a great big retail area. And then if you go to, further to the west and to the north, it's all industrial, lots and lots of trucks here. And this is in the heart of wineries and orchards, lots of apples, and, you know, Washington, we love our apples. And the problem was that this, on the side of this, it's called Valley Mall Boulevard, there's a traffic signal right here, and then there's another one right there. And when you put traffic signals so close together, you end up having to, you have to make them operate as one signal. And because of that distance between them, you have long clearance times, and they get very inefficient. So they were looking to, what can we do to bring some order to this? And this is that picture that you saw right at the beginning. So here's the project now, where you can see, this is very much what, very similar to what we're looking at at the Placerville interchange, in that you have the off-ramp, there's an on-ramp, there's a, you know, approaching lanes this direction, and you can't see, there's a bypass lane right here for people that are going onto the on-ramp. And there's another bypass lane that the, was it, the mayor Thomas, who you were the one that was asking about, that you can come up and you can make that maneuver from one roadway to another without actually entering the circulating lane. And that's a feature, too, that, one, it improves your performance because you don't have as many traffic, much traffic into your circulating lane. And secondly, you can get your trucks to make movements that you wouldn't have, wouldn't otherwise be able to. So I'm going to, yes, ma'am?
So where are the pedestrians in that?
In this, this one?
In that?
Well, here, let me, I'm going to show you the video, and you can see a little bit, a little more clear where the pedestrians are. Okay, back out of there. All right, we'll go to this one in five and a half. I'm going to advance this some so we can get some more vehicles in here.
So this is that intersection?
Okay, so here's the off-ramp, the on-ramp on the opposite side. Valley Mall Boulevard goes straight through and under the interstate, Interstate 82. And then here you can see the bypass lane that connects the off-ramp to the frontage road. And on this roundabout, you can see, here's a pedestrian crossing that comes across, and, you know, through this island area, and they cross again on the other side. Now, in this particular roundabout, there's hotel on the opposite side, and I was taking this video from on top of a building. There, when you get to the other side of the interstate, there's no pedestrian generators on the far side of this roadway. And then, so the state in this case says, "Well, we don't want you to put the crosswalks across that on-ramp." So that's in this case, and it works well because indeed, there is, there's no pedestrian, nothing, no place for them to go, nothing to draw them. Now, and what I want you to notice here, notice the speeds. Notice how, what kind of a civil and kind of a calm environment this is. And also, this roundabout is about the side, we call it inscribed circle diameter, and that's a measurement from the outside of the circulating lane on one side to the outside of the circulating lane on the opposite side. This particular roundabout, because it has much higher volumes than what is forecast for the Placerville roundabout, and there you can see a truck using that bypass lane, it's larger, it's about two hundred feet, whereas the Placerville roundabout, as it's laid out right now, is about a hundred and seventy feet, so it's smaller. And another reason is, that'd be, from this edge of the circulating lane all the way across through the center, the center island, to the edge of the circulating lane over there. And also, because this one has so much higher volumes, there are two-lane entrances on three of the four approaches. One, two, yeah, three of the four approaches. On the Placerville layout, there's only two entry lanes on one approach, one of the four approaches. Let's see. So any comments or questions on this, before I move ahead?
So there's two lanes, and I'm just going to use the Placerville Drive one. There's two lanes coming west, oh, yeah, west, across from Indianapolis, they go across the freeway. They come into the roundabout, and there's, they come into two lanes, but then it, on the other side, by the freeway on-ramp, it's only one lane, is that true?
Yeah, well, here, let's do this. Let's go back to, how did you get those to come up? That one? Is that the best one?
Use attachment three.
Three is a little more, yeah, okay.
Let me come into here. So, pardon? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, it won't go down until I zoom back. This one? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. On the approaches, coming from, coming across the bridge, you can see there are two lanes that come into the roundabout off the bridge. So, and it's just the same, if you are, you know, right, if you have two lanes going into an intersection, if you want to turn left, use the left lane, if you want to turn right, use the right lane. If you want to go straight, take your pick, same thing, nothing's changed, nothing's changed here. So then, here, there's one lane coming off the off-ramp. You can go into the circulating lane, or you can use the bypass lane. And there's one lane coming off this road, and you can, you know, go right, go straight, or make your left-hand movement. Coming this direction, there are two lanes, only one goes into the circulating lane, the second one is into the bypass to go into the on-ramp. Okay?
So is there, does that create a, I'm going to say, a collision problem, that somebody wanted to change lanes, if they thought, "Oh, my gosh, I've got to get in that other lane to turn?"
Well, you know, when, if you're coming up to a traffic signal and you discover you're in the wrong lane, what do you do? It's, you know, it's a good question, but it's not really a roundabout question, it applies to every intersection. Yeah. In a roundabout way. Oh, and here you can see, we have sidewalks, we have sidewalks on all legs on this roundabout. And I'm going to talk about pedestrians a bit in just a moment. All right, let's minimize this guy. So now, I'm going to show you a second interchange roundabout. And this is in Monroe, Washington, and you can see it's kind of the same routine. If I can find my arrow, there it is. Here we have the state highway, off-ramp and an on-ramp. And what gave this project momentum is that the state, or, excuse me, the city built their new high school on this Tester Road, which is a dead end. And so they built this lovely, beautiful, big high school, lots of parking, five hundred student drivers. Plus, this roundabout is the highway access for three gravel pits. It routinely has twenty-five percent to thirty percent heavy vehicles through it. So put all that mixed together. But if we can have, you know, well-designed geometry, and we have positive control over speeds, life is good. There are very few things in life that it's a win-win. Usually if there's a win, there is something you've got to give up for it. And the one win is the fact that we can get motor vehicles to drive at bicycle speeds through the intersection. The other win is that I can get more vehicles through this intersection than if I had a traffic signal. And because it's not a sequence, people can enter and exit on every leg at the same time. So here's, jumping to the picture. Again, this is a larger roundabout than the Placerville layout. This one's about two hundred and ten feet across. So the Placerville roundabout would be a little bit bigger than what the center island is. Okay, now, the question always comes up, how are people going to deal with this? How in the world, are our people smart enough to do this? You know, and I've learned two things in working as a professional in transportation. One is, I wasted a lot of time getting training and going to school, because everybody with a driver's license is a transportation expert. And just about every place in the world you go, people say, "Our drivers are like no one else, nowhere else in the world." Well, yeah, there is some variance between different areas, you know, some, but it's not nearly as much as we would like to think. We're not that special. All right, now, this video here, this roundabout, let me run up so we get some more cars in here. You can see they have not yet put landscaping in the center island yet. And the roundabout actually opened up about three weeks before school, the first day of school. But most of this traffic, now, you can see it's school traffic, because they're all, you see all of the traffic coming up Tester Road up this hill and going back down, all the buses- going back down, all the buses and so on, most of these people have never seen a roundabout before. It, it doesn't take rocket science, you know, you have good signage and striping on your approaches, so the, the user knows, okay, if I wanted to do this maneuver, this is the lane I need to be in. If they're in the wrong lane, well, they just make their way through, and next time they know better. But then, again, note the speeds, note the speed, yes ma'am?
So the roundabout in that picture though, is, is it one lane, but why, like, for two lanes, and just not striped yet, or is it?
They, they haven't got the striping down yet.
So it will be striped for two lanes?
Yes, it is striped now, and so, they don't even have the, they don't even have the benefit of the circulating lane striping yet. Yeah, there's a little bit of queuing on this off-ramp, but you, you watch, you know, consider where else is there queuing? At the moment, there's, there's nothing. As soon as these folks get some gaps in the circulating lane, they'll come up and they'll, they'll roll in. One thing I, I've noticed in watching this roundabout, is that the bus drivers, see if that, oh, that one didn't do it, oops, let me run this back again, get back to where we have some. The bus drivers, when they're coming around the circulating lane, if they see another bus driver's on an approach, you know, waiting there at the yield line, that you'll see the circu, the one coming in the circulating lane, he'll, he'll slow, you know, and give a gap to his friend, his fellow driver, and the other, and the other one.
I have a question.
So, again, what I want you to, yes ma'am?
On this video and the last one, you said, note the speeds, it looks like it's been slowed down a lot.
No, ma'am.
'Cause on the other one, it said, look at how slow the, the freeway traffic's moving, and then that bus is just crawling.
Yep. The geometry di-
I mean, that looks like it's five miles an hour.
Geometry dict takes a speed, this is act, I haven't played with this. You want to take a note, or say anything? No, these, these are actual speeds, and, but that, well, your comment there, yeah, is, I hear that all the time when I show videos, oh.
How fast are these guys going right here?
You've slowed that out, no, that's actual speed, and the more traffic you get in the roundabout, you know, it brings speeds down even more.
So how fast is that bus going?
Oh, coming up the, well, he's climbing a hill, so he's working hard, so he's, you know, 25, 30, well, 25 probably, coming up that hill. You can see the one going down the hill. Yeah.
Maybe 15 now.
Yeah, he's a little slower.
So the bicyclist was riding uphill a lot faster than the cars?
If you would like, I'll show you a, a video of a roundabout that has a lot of commuter bike traffic through it, and the commuter bikers have to slow for the traffic. They're, they're, the bikers, bicyclists are the fastest ones through the, through the intersection. Okay. Let me go back to here, oops. Those are two interchanges. Oh, I wanted to give you some examples, you know, these, these two interchange roundabouts are in, in Washington, but let me give you some examples of roundabouts that we've done in California. This is in, in Grass Valley, and if you're familiar with this intersection, it was an always stop, and people stopped for a long time, during the peak hours, they had some really long queues, and this is the roundabout that would fit into it, and this one had some very difficult design constraints, just the right-of-way of it, and the number one thing, like, over 90% of the time, when we go to a client, says, no, I, I cannot recommend a roundabout at this location, is because I don't have enough room to fit good geometry to get the speed control I want. You know, and typically, I go back, well, if you can give us another five feet over here, or 10 feet over there, then we can have good speed control, 'cause that's, that's the heart and soul of it. And when we go back, and we, we, an agency has a roundabout that's giving them problems, it's, it's typically, it's because one or more legs are just letting traffic enter too fast, and so we have to work on the approaches. Another example, this is in Morro Bay, California, so whoever knows Gary Puckett probably knows Jack LaLanne, yeah? Well, this is where Jack LaLanne lived, in Morro Bay, and there's the state highway and the off and on ramps, and this was a project where the city, they had a, they had a, they had their, the contract, or they had, they awarded this contract for a roundabout, and then there's somebody from the Caltrans says, did you ever have anybody peer review this? He says, no, not at all. And typically, we wanna peer review before 30%, 'cause you don't wanna redo your grading and your, your stormwater, or after, you know, what, because I'm moving curbs around. So, anyway, it, it was, it was a very sad design, but bless the man's heart, his name is Bill Boucher, he's retired now, and I said, we can peer review this, but if you, if you don't, if you plan to make, construct this as your plans show right now, you don't want any of our, of our comments on record. And he says, no, no, I want it done, 'cause I have several intersections that are not conducive for traffic signals, and my first one has to be a winner. So, it got, it got completely redesigned. And so here's, here's the, the layout for the roundabout, and you'll, you'll notice that we did not incorporate the, the ramps, off and on ramps at this time, but we did also give them a layout that has a second roundabout at the ramps as well, so when they go to that point, they can do that. One more, this is in, this, down near Tracy, San Joaquin County, and this is a big boulevard, this is Grantline Road, it crosses 11th, and you can see there's this huge boulevard between the, the, you know, eastbound, westbound traffic, and so this roundabout, now, or this intersection now looks like this. And it's, you know, all this nice swoopy landscaping is really cool, if you're a bird, and you can appreciate it. But it looks nice on the ground as well, that part of it. Let's see, and then, within Tracy, they had a project right next to the train station, they wanted to build, they wanted to build a park in this, this kind of excavated area, and they wanted to make a couplet, so this road is one, one way to the east, and they wanted a second road, it's one way to the left, or to the west, and they couldn't figure, they're having difficulty tying in on each end of the project. So we ended up with a solution of two roundabouts, a mini roundabout on the east end of the, of their little park area, and an oval-shaped one on the west end. Now, in, in my years of working, I, I don't know how many traffic signal systems I've designed, and I still design traffic signal systems, but I've never designed a pretty one. There's not much you can do with green, yellow, reds, and walks and don't walks. However, the roundabout gives you an opportunity, this is a roundabout, it's right next to a community college, and actually, the community college did the landscaping in the center of the roundabout, you notice the sun is out in Washington, isn't that pretty? And then, this is the one at the, at the, well, the one in Monroe, that I showed the, the video, video of the first day of school, and with this one, it was actually, the city has, there's a gardening group club, I'm not sure I'm using the right term, that they were working on the center island design, and then the high school's horticulture department, they also contribute to this, to this part. And having something in the middle, if you look at that top picture there, landscaping for a roundabout is very, very important, it's the, getting performance in a roundabout, the, the geometry is the heart and soul of it, that has to be right, but your, your signing, striping, landscaping have a holistic effect on it, and when you, for example, that, that landscaping in the center island, you want, you want something vertical, you want to break up that sightline. It does three things for you, the first thing, a driver is, a motorist is approaching, and if nothing else, they have no idea what's in front of them, they don't know if roundabouts one-word or hyphenated, but they know there's something in front of them that they cannot drive through, that makes a reasonable driver cautious. Second thing it does, is one thing that, that motorists, they're a little bit antsy about roundabouts their first time, is because when traffic, with, with traffic signals, we are trained and conditioned from the car seat to the grave, we give our attention to green, yellow, reds, walks and don't walks, and we do not even look at the, at the conflicting traffic. Now, my, my preferred transportation is my motorcycle, I love to ride my motorcycle, and I'm alive after decades of riding my motorcycles, because when the light turns gray, or green, I look left, I look right. And so, part of the, the condition with the roundabout is the fact that it requires every user, driver, pedestrian, bicyclist, you are required to look at the conflicting traffic and make your own decision, and people don't wanna do that, they don't wanna do that. And also, that whatever's happening on that far side of the roundabout, that, that has no, that's, that's a distraction, that does not help them look to their left and make, and decide if they can proceed into the circulating lane. So we like something to break up that sightline, and we also, it channelizes their vision to where we want them to be looking. Okay, now, this is more like a typical Northwest day, but here, I don't know if this sign would meet the requirements that you all were talking about earlier this evening, but you can see the intent of it, that here is a welcome to my community, whatever you would like. This is the, the center island in that, that roundabout in Grass Valley, and I, I have to confess, art's kind of wasted on me sometimes, and usually, the better it is, the more it's wasted on me, I'm an engineer, I'm sorry, but I, I, this is supposed to be depicting about their, their, the culture and the mining and that all, but I, I haven't figured it out yet, I need somebody to explain it to me. Let's see, what else there? Oh, these, this is in Avon, Colorado, there's a lot of money in Avon, and you can see in that top right, they have the statue of the Porsches and the Broncos, and you can just go, however money, much you wanna spend your money on, on dealing with them. Just quickly, I'm gonna talk just on pedestrians, well, I don't need that slide. This is the roundabouts right next to the community college, 10,000-plus students, and when the, when the pedestrians cross it a roundabout, for one thing, traffic is only approaching from one direction, secondly, the, the approaching vehicle has already been affected by the geometry and the landscaping, so they've scrubbed off a lot of speed by the time they, they reach the crosswalk. And then, you'll see that there's a, there's a, there's always, in the center, or in the splitter island, there's this circular, what we call a refuge area, and they're based on, typically, the, this has to be a minimum of six feet wide, and that's based on if somebody pushing a wheelchair, there's room to do that, but we always say, when we teach the core design class, consider the users, we've had a roundabout case on, a roundabout on an equestrian trail, and six feet, when you look at the horse, nose to exhaust, six feet's not enough, so you figure out what your users are, do that. And then, so then, when they're, they cross the exits, then again, they, their traffic's coming from one direction. Now, there is issues of visually impaired with roundabouts, they, they are just fine, and I, one of my, my best friends growing up was, was blind, and her name's Mona Gergen, and she, it's amazing what she, how she taught me to pay attention to your other senses, but when they, they have no issue with the approaching traffic, that's, that's approaching the roundabout, 'cause they can hear that, that traffic coming. Where the difficulty is, when they're crossing the exit lane, they hear traffic, they cannot distinguish whether it's exiting or circulating, so that's part, and so there's, there's, there's issues that we're working with for, for helping, helping that issue. Oh, this is a same roundabout with a lady with her guide dog, guide dog had no issues with it at all, although the guide dog did not realize he didn't have to look both ways, but, you know, we're trained. When you come to bicycles, do we have any bicycle riders on the council? Nobody, oh, okay. All right, well, the, the next taken, when somebody raises their hand, then I ask them, do you ride those little, wear those tight, bright-colored britches?
He does.
He does? Okay. Oh, very good.
Jackie?
All right, well, when I ride my bicycle, I don't wear those, 'cause I don't ride fast enough to have wind resistance. Now, the difference between, the, the difference between a bicyclist using the, you know, approaching this traffic signal versus a roundabout, is on who responds to whom, and, okay, this is a, there's a right turn lane here, so the, the traffic, it wants to make a right turn, and they cross over, and they, and they move up, and we, we keep that, the reason we're doing that is so we don't run, have that situation where we have a motor vehicle sitting there with a bicycle on their right front fender, boo, bad, that's why we get the collisions. But what happens, sometimes the motors, they'll, they'll cross where they're supposed to, sometimes they cross later, and at the last moment, but when you're a bicyclist, and you're approaching this point in, on the bicycle lane, assuming you have a good sense of self-preservation, you're kinda looking over your shoulder to see what's approaching, and you're trying to get in that motor's head to figure out, what, what's that driver gonna do? Is he going straight, is he gonna turn right? Hallelujah, he turned his turn signal on, I know what's going on. But the issue is, you are responding, you're reacting to whatever that motor is, is going to do. So with a roundabout, what we do, is we provide that, the bicyclist, a decision point. The, the bicycle lane comes up, and it terminates. Now, at this point, if, the young lady here is, is riding her bicyclist, she is looking for, for that, that, that traffic, and she, she decides, I'm gonna take a gap, I'm gonna pull, pull myself into that approaching traffic, and ride in line with the cars, not, not alongside them, in line with cars, through the circulating lane and out the other side. Now, but if you're a bicyclist like me, you have that option of coming up this little ramp, getting on the combined-use trail, and then going, using the crosswalk, and dropping back in on the far side of the intersection. And I'm gonna show you one more video, and then I will be, be quiet unless you have any questions. And this is a, a video that has, during the peak hours, has lots and lots of bicycle traffic. Here we go. And there's a bypass lane, okay, there you see the bicyclist going through the circulating lane. This roundabout has a, a bypass lane here, and a second one on the other side, well, here the, the bicyclist happens to be approaching, when there's not a whole lot of traffic. Now, because this, this is a right-turn bypass lane, to go straight through, the bicyclist has to either get up onto the sidewalk area, or the bicyclist has to move over two lanes' worth to go through the circulating lane. And if you look there, here comes another one, and he's right in the middle of a lot of cars. So the geometry of, of the roundabout is slowing things down, the landscaping in front slows him, starting to work his way over, ah, there's a good gap, roll right into there, and notice now, he's coasting, because he's, oh, and there's another one through the circulating lane. He's coasting because he had, the cars are slowing him down. And I, I've never, I've not, I've never spoken to a commuter bicyclist, and I've talked to quite a number of them, that did not like the roundabouts. And the reason is, he says, it brings the traffic down to my speed, I can comfortably maneuver and negotiate through. And I think there's one more coming up. Well, it's supposed to, well, that depends on what the local agency laws, the question was, if they're gonna use a sidewalk, then they are supposed to dismount. Well, if you have an eight-to-10-foot combined-use path, at least in the state of Washington, you can stay mounted on that, but when you get to the crosswalks, it depends on what city, one city says they get, they're supposed to dismount, and other cities says they don't. So, on this case, okay, here, oh, here comes Patrick, I gotta hurry him up a little bit, come on now, guy. Ah, he's gotten up on the walkway, he's gonna come around. And in a perfect world, this exiting vehicle would, would stop and yield to him, doesn't always happen, but this bicyclist is a survivor. Now, you notice now, when he gets across here, the entering vehicle does stop and, and yield to him, right there, you can get him in the corner of the picture, and then once through the roundabout, he drops back down into the circulate, into his bike path. Okay, I'm gonna stop there. Any questions? That's, you, you just got a roundabout 101.
Thank you very much for that excellent presentation, that's, that's the clearest depiction of a roundabout, with the traffic circulation and addressing all of the concerns that our community has been concerned about, in such a clear fashion, so thank you very much, Mr. McGrady. Council, council member questions at this point, Councilmember Borelli, Patton?
That was a great question.
Ms. Mayor Hagan?
That was a good one.
All right, wonderful.
All right, also, if, if you have occasion where any of these videos I've shown are of value to you, you know, I've just, you can email me, we, we share all this stuff.
Excellent, that was really well done, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'd like to open up public comment. At this point, I'd like to open up public comment. If anyone would like to speak to this, uh, this matter, please come forward and state your name for the record. Good evening, again.
Good evening, Michael Druvish Placerville. Excellent presentation, like your style.
Yeah.
More government people were in that vein. Okay. My question too, on were those speeds real, because looking at the background freeway traffic, it just looked to just slug right through.
I, I didn't suggest anything.
Okay. Um, first off, if retaining walls are required at the Big Lots Shopping Center, I forget what the actual name is. Um, naked concrete retaining walls are highly discouraged in Placerville, so I would like to see them dressed up. Whether, they're gonna be required on either way. So if it's welcome to Placerville and bussed into it, or something, but that needs to be in the plans now, so they're, the dollars and everything stated upfront, it shall not be a naked, naked concrete wall. Um, I think I got my question answered on, would either interchange option have an effect on which bridge is needed, whether we even need a new expensive bridge? So I guess it's three lane for a roundabout and four lane for a signal. New bridge.
And yes, we need a new bridge. No matter what, because of the alignment.
We got the money for that?
Uh, okay.
Describe how the stalled county bike trail that's now a dead end, how is that gonna function? With the cars coming across the river, swinging around, going over the overcrossing, and going towards the fairgrounds? I can see the sidewalks now, and the little squiggly sidewalk where there's the diversion, the bypass. Will there be a concrete barrier between the outside of that arch and the sidewalk to prevent a car from sliding out of that lane and over the sidewalk?
We can get that answered?
You understand the question? No, the bypass, the only bypass?
Oh, over here?
Yeah, between that bypass lane to the left, is there gonna be any barrier to keep a vehicle from going over that sidewalk next to it?
I don't think you're talking about that spot, right?
Yep.
I don't know that, I don't know the question, but that's a really, really slow speed right there.
Exiting off the freeway?
Oh, yeah, but the time, well,
Slick road?
On the freeway, yes, but at the time, we, we get, we put friction by curves on those sides. We see there's some geometry there, that start the larger radius there, and put it into the smaller radius.
There's a, there's kind of a trade-off, there's kind of a trade-off there as to beginning close to the bypass lane versus the, the circulating lane. I, I don't, I don't believe there is a, any wall there at the moment.
Um, I am concerned, I'm familiar with the one in Grass Valley, and the picture you showed must have been at the beginning, but now the vegetation has grown to such a point, there is sightline issues up there. And I walked it for quite a while, and your head has to be on a swivel.
Yeah, there have, um, part of the construction documents control, you, you go through and you do analysis for, for site triangles. For every vehicle, every position, not only the motors, but the pedestrians. See, everybody can see what they're supposed to see, when they're supposed to see it. But you are right, if, that, that landscaping has to be maintained. Otherwise, you're gonna start to hide in your pedestrians.
So it's an increase for a roundabout compared to signalization? Maintenance?
Well, yeah, the roundabout maintenance amounts to landscaping and refreshing the striping.
Okay, so the bike trail. Would a supplemental EIR for low-high roundabout include a fuller traffic study than the 11-page one? And question is, how many of these roundabouts, after you do your, you do your traffic analysis before the project starts? And you're, you have some assumptions in there, how many after-built traffic pedestrian safety studies are done?
Well, every, I'm gonna answer in two parts. First of all, having to do with capacity. Uh, once we have a roundabout in the design, in the ground, and it's been functioning for some months, at least three months, six months is better. And the traffic patterns have found their new norms, we'll go out and we'll collect the new field data. How many vehicles are making what maneuvers, and how long the queues get. And then I take that, those numbers, and then I run them again in my analysis software. And so I, it, it helps me to backcheck my analysis software, that when I'm modeling future num, future growth rates, that I have a level of confidence with it, and, and it allows me to, to do a little bit of calibrating within my, my model. So on that part, we, I get a high level of confidence with, with that, with the, the software. In Washington State, we have more than 250 roundabouts in the ground. We have never, we've not had one reported pedestrian or, or bicycle, bicyclist injured at a roundabout. And I think we, oh, I just, Brian Walsh should share those numbers with me. Oh goodness, I, I should have to check. I, it, it's in the nature of, when it comes to pedestrians, there were like five reported, uh, collisions out of that 250, and with the bicyclists, there were two.
Are you familiar with the Woodinville roundabouts?
Woodinville, oh, by the old schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michael?
I was gonna address the, okay.
Yeah, we need to address the council, then we'll get your questions answered, we don't have a back and back.
Family lives up in Woodinville, they have twin roundabouts.
Yeah.
And, uh, what I found interesting was at the roundabout for the pedestrians, there's little cups on the signs with little orange flags.
Yeah.
And the pedestrians go walking through the intersection, "Do you see me? Do you see me?"
Okay.
They do that a lot of senior communities.
They have a lot of fog up there though, too.
You want me to respond to that, or are we waiting?
We'll wait. Are there any other questions, Michael?
Oh, yeah. Grass Valley Roundabout Line of Sight. Also, that, um, roundabout at Grass Valley, at maximum turning radius of my truck, I could not stay in the center lane.
So your question is, how does, how does this roundabout design differ from that one?
Diameter, will everything from a big rig be able to navigate at least the, the inner ring?
Okay, Mr. McGrady?
When, and when you have the large trucks, well, that's why you have truck aprons.
Aprons, right.
Trying to picture. Uh, let's see. Okay, this, this portion of the circulating lane, this, the concrete portion of it, that is a truck apron. That allows the, the tractor will drive through the circulating lane, and his trailer can track onto that. And it has a three-inch mountable curb on it, so he's not buggering up his tires on his, 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 uh, trailer, which a vertical curb will do. And so that's how the truck will do that. And also on this particular roundabout, you can see on this outside edge, uh, even though the trucks were, should be using that bypass lane, if one does come into the center lane, uh, in Washington, it'd be WB67, I guess it'd be a California standard here. That, that he can make, also can make that right turn, and has, has a bit of an apron there for his, his, uh, trailer to track onto. And the idea is, in the roundabout design, you make the geomet, you've been doing it in a fashion that to accommodate your designed vehicle, but keep your automobiles at the proper speeds.
I have a question on Attachment 3.
Okay.
Concerning vehicles coming from, say, Rayleigh's going to Missouri Flat. And the, I guess it's a bypass lane, with a pedestrian overcrossing where it shows basically retaining, beginning of the retaining wall. Will there be enough line of sight, I anticipate large vehicle speeds going onto the on-ramp, with a pedestrian overcrossing that might just be too far for them to see. They'll be looking left, increasing speed for the on-ramp. And I don't know if it makes more sense for that over, pedestrian crossing to move closer towards the fairgrounds? But that looks like a point of concern for pedestrians. Um, and then the statement that pedestrians are only looking one direction, cause traffic is only one direction, but I think that changes when you get to your refuge point. You're looking left until you get to the center, then you look in right.
Yeah.
So, looking only one direction doesn't seem right.
But you're probably only looking one at a time, one direction at a time.
Well, uh, traffic only approaches from one direction.
Right, okay, right. Anything else?
Is it true that, I was reading something about recent federal regulations expressly discouraging directing bike trails into roundabouts? Um, and so I am concerned with the county trail being sent up into the upper roundabout.
All right, we can get that answered.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks.
All right, thank you. Let's get that, uh, well, we'll get that question answered after public comment.
Hello?
Hi, Sue Taylor. Um, just a few questions. On this one, is it possible, do you have the friction points on this scenario? You know, where you showed all the dots for the different, um, scenarios at the beginning on a, you showed on, I thought it was, was it conflict points, correct? Did you do this, that type of thing on this, um, scenario? I'm just curious.
This, this roundabout versus the traffic signal? No, that, I, no, I didn't take the time.
Okay.
I used that illustration, cause it's, it's simple.
I'll address the,
Thank you.
Um, I would just be curious on this particular scenario to see the, thank you for the right terminology, the, the pressure points?
Conflict.
Conflict points on this, um, actual picture. Cause I think at the beginning, it was a good demonstration, but it was for two different types of projects. So I, I would ask to have it done on this actual project for this city. And then, um, so is the city having to do this scenario because of what you did on Ray Lawyer Drive interchange? Is that what it's?
So you're asking, um, why this scenario?
Well, we're doing, you're doing a whole new interchange at Ray Lawyer. And is it because of the design of that, that you have to do, also overhaul this interchange?
All right, well, we'll get that answered.
Do you understand the question?
How do they relate to each other?
It, is that why we're overhauling this interchange?
Okay.
And, and if so, did you know that before you started the other interchange?
Okay.
And then I'm just curious, how much money the city has in the budget for these road projects that you're showing us? That I would like to know the cost of the overall project.
Okay.
And, um, and what's in the budget to move forward? And if it's so astronomical and you don't have any money, are you gonna look at that before you move forward with continuing to do more plans?
Okay. We'll get that answered for you.
And then the last thing, I think Nathan mentioned that you put in the, the energy, the roundabout, because then you can get the funding to continue with the EIR, because you're proposing another roundabout. And if that's really the reason that you're doing that, thank you.
All right, we'll get that cleared up. Thank you. Any other comments?
Sue Rodman. In the last 35 years of working for the Forest Service off of Fornie Road, off Brew Road, um, I have noticed that this whole area has gotten more congested all the time. And the amount of stoplights and the amount of traffic coming in. And now we have a stop sign where Brew Road comes into Fornie.
Yeah.
We have a stop sign where the CHP comes into Fornie. We have traffic coming off of the freeway onto Fornie Road, trying to get across the bridge. And it's really a congested mess right now. And it has only gotten worse over the years with the, uh, In-N-Out and the Office Max and the, uh, the county offices. You know, it's just more and more people and more and more cars using that whole area. And to me, this looks like the most rational solution I have seen to that whole entire mess. To me, this looks like a place where roundabouts will actually work. So those are my comments after having fought with that traffic for 30 years.
All right, thank you, Sue. Good evening, Jackie.
Good evening, Jackie. Now, I tell you, that looks scary with a bike, but here's the thing. I went back Midwest for some family weddings and stuff, and there are new roundabouts everywhere. So the reality is, is we know, we need to know how to learn to drive in roundabouts. And having one in Placerville is the perfect opportunity for us to practice, so that when we go everywhere else, we will figure it out. So, that's what I think.
Thank you. All right, that, with that, we'll, we'll close public comment, and actually, let's, let's, um, get some of these questions answered. Um, let's talk about how the, the bike trail that, that is not built yet, how that's going to seam into this project in this intersection.
I have a, a picture here, um, but I will, maybe I can't talk while I'm looking for it. This, this exhibit on the cover page of the traffic study shows kind of a schematic of what we're talking about doing. Um, there's been concern expressed by Caltrans about the terminus of the bike path at the Freeride, where the off-ramp comes, um, from eastbound onto Fornie Road. So it's, it's looking for, like, the direction we will go is to terminate the bike path at a, um, a location, uh, over here. But it's still in the design phase, and, and unless, Liz, do you have any insight on, on that? But, um, we will be required to, and I think the council may have heard that the good news over at the county is that, um, Caltrans has accepted a, a design exception for a, a solution for getting that bike path built.
That's good news.
I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but it's, it's on us, one of our design exceptions for the overall project report is that Caltrans expects us, this project, to, um, make all features of the bike path from west of, of the bridge here, up and including the bridge, um, up to standard. So we'll be expected, if there's a barrier constructed now, to tear that out, shift the bike path to the south, and establish sight distance that, that Caltrans requires. And that's another reason that, you know, the bridge is, is, um, not sufficient, but it's a, another reason that we need to reconstruct that, uh, abutment further to the south, concurrent with the new bridge.
So what is the funding source for that?
As yet to be determined.
Okay.
So this, this element of the project, and, and I'm gonna be answering a, a number of the questions, I guess, but this element of the project is, um, is what was driving the whole project. And the, the congestion at, at this location, and, and the need to, um, develop Ray Lawyer overcrossing as a, as a full interchange. And the project received, uh, federal earmark money, um, from Congressman Dolittle, is that? And, um, that's been funding the design and construction is, as money becomes available. For example, um, this, uh, the city chased, um, stimulus funding, the ARA funding for the on-ramp wasn't successful. That wasn't ready there, I, I think. We cha, we, we chased it, but didn't get it. Um, and did successfully get the Proposition 1B, the state corridor mobility improvement account, $6 million. So as funds become available and we're, have plans that are ready, that's the way to, to get the funding. If we don't have the plans, we can't get the funding. Um, so the approach has been a phased approach. This region is not likely to see a $40 million, the overall cost of both interchanges and one chunk. So taking off bites, and the, uh, westbound on-ramp that we're under construction with um, is identified as the stage one component, because it allows for demolition of Placerville Drive Bridge and a detour to access the freeway, while the, the bridge and the on-ramp are, are being constructed at Placerville Drive, so.
And that phased funding is working well to move the project along?
To date, it is, and, and we've received, um, programming, the entire region's R-TIP funding for, um, the 1617 cycle is coming into the city for those Ray Lawyer improvements. But improvement, construction funding for Placerville Drive has yet to be, um, located, so.
Okay, great. Liz?
I'm sorry, I made you stand there for so long.
That's okay. I just maybe would add a couple things, and maybe if you can, um, maybe pull up Attachment 2. Nate, I basically answered most of the questions, um, but I did wanna just kind of add, and maybe for the benefit of, of, of all, the whole Western Placerville Interchange Project is a component of, you know, the city's general plan. You know, you have growth over a number of years, and you have traffic improvements that need to go along with those, as well as your sewer, your water, all those other things you plan, when you have a general plan. And so this interchange couplet is needed to deal with the growth that's anticipated to occur, not only in Placerville, but because you're on a freeway, the through traffic that you will get on Highway 50. So, um, the, these traffic numbers that you see in these projections, we're always looking out so far because of that reason. The reason we, you know, uh, uh, another compelling reason to do that is when The reason we, you know, another compelling reason to do that is when you, you plan these, you want to plan for the future so that you don't build something that doesn't work for very long. You put it in the wrong place, and oh, if you'd only wished you had made a little bit more room for that other lane you needed ten years from now. So the state typically and agencies typically will look out to, when do you think that you can get it built? And will it last at least twenty years? So that's why some of these studies you see us talking about twenty forty-five. We're talking about twenty forty-five projections, which grant you that's out there always, but we're anticipating, you may not have funding to build all of this until that time. In the meantime, you chip away at it, and some of the traffic studies, when we look at phasing, should we do this ramp or that ramp? When we look at Ray Lawyer Drive, we're looking at, there is money programmed to construct some of that. So which is the best thing to construct? Which is your best bang for your buck? And will it of its own self bring benefit to the public and not waste that money? So we always look at the, if you do nothing versus if you only build the next phase. So when we look at Ray Lawyer Drive, we're looking at, okay, let's do nothing. What, what would that mean if you continue to have background growth? Even if Placerville doesn't approve anything and you don't have any growth? Well, you already have a problem out there. You already have LOSF and the PM over at the other interchange. There's nowhere else for people to go. So by opening some of the ramps up at Ray Lawyer, you start to redistribute traffic over there. And the traffic's kind of like water, you know, it just kind of seeks its level of least resistance. So whichever one you open, someone's going to figure out a different way to go, and it's going to relieve pressure off the other. That's why you're seeing in the traffic analysis for Ray Lawyer, this kind of balancing that goes on. There's a lot of talk about a courthouse up on that wall, up on that hillside, and, and folks want to make sure that that's accommodated, so the numbers include that when you look at twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-eight. So when money's programmed for construction, we start looking at phased delivery. So on the other side, when people ask, well, why are you even bothering spending time and money on the, the other, you know, western Placerville, you know, Placerville Drive-Fornie intersection, you don't have money to build it? Well, one, the discussion we had with the, the shopping center folks, they want to get on with their lives. They want to build their shopping center. So they want to know where is the road going to go? So by doing this geometric work and traffic work and deciding, is it going to be a roundabout or is it going to be signals? And is it going to be one roundabout or two roundabouts? And setting that footprint, you can then start to say, this is the rideaway, and this is where the walls are going to go. And, and people can get on with their lives, even if it then sits on the shelf for a couple of years. Separate from that, and I believe this, once you know that and you get through some of these other things, then maybe there's an incremental improvement on this side. No one has forty million dollars to give you all at one time, but you've chipped away six million, and you're going to chip away another six over here, five or six as we do the Ray Lawyer work. And a couple of years will go by, and you're going to pick up another five million somewhere, maybe ten. And now you can maybe do the roundabout at High Low, or maybe a right turn lane up at Placerville Drive, but you'll put it in the right place because you'll know your maximum footprint. So all these things are game, are aimed at knowing, knowing what you want to do eventually. We know that if you build all of that, it's going to work great for a really long time. But we're also trying to figure out what little things can you do in the budgets that you have or are likely to get or projects you're likely to be competitive for? What can you then deliver in little pieces and parts? And they're not that little piece and parts, they're just talking about on-ramps and things. But these are, you know, the steps you go through. Now, tonight, we're asking, you know, authorization to go forward with the supplemental EIR for that low-high roundabout, but we will tie in things like the bike path connection. And we've been talking to Transit, we didn't even, you know, get into it tonight, but we've talked with Transit about potentially a Transit lot over at, near Ray Lawyer. We fold that in. We're talking with them about, if they want to do that work, maybe we do it all at the same time. So, you know, it'll be an opportunity to kind of answer some of these questions a little more depth in that document so that it can be presented with, you know, a little, little bit more detail. But before, of course, going through that expense, we want to make sure we're, we're going down the path the council wants us to. So that's why Nate asked us to-
Thank you, Liz. And I just have to tell you, I, I was just extremely impressed with the plan that came back with us tonight and thinking about the conversation we had last February, and especially in, in light of the concerns with the shopping center and then what you presented to us tonight. You were just very responsive to all our concerns, and I understand that you had a conversation with the shopping center owners. They are also pleased with this design. So I just commend you for being so responsive to our concerns.
I'll say thank you for Juan and Patrick who did all the hard work. They, they come up with these things, and then I just get to talk about it.
That was very impressive, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point, council comments and, and direction. Vice Mayor Hagan?
I just recall about nine years ago when I was elected to this council, that we were working on this particular project. At the time, we decided to put a roundabout at Placerville Drive and Fair Lane. And that decision was made after several presentations, but primarily, one is cost. And two was to eliminate twenty-seven signals, or that number of light bulbs at the corner of Fair Lane and Placerville Drive. That signalization went in, and within two weeks, I and my little insurance agency down the street had two fairly good-sized accidents right there. Not me personally, clients had them. And I continue to see and have seen over the years the conflicts there because the signalization, the lights on them are prismed. And if you're not sitting in the height in your vehicle where the prism reflects correctly, you don't know if that light is red or green. And it's the second one, and the same thing is back from the freeway. You can, those people don't look at the one right there where they're stopped at, the limit line. They look at the next signal ahead. Well, if you've lived here long enough, you know when that signal turns green ahead of you, guess what? It's the same time the ones from the right also have a green light. So there is several conflicts there. Ideally, we'd put Fair Lane behind the shopping center. I don't think we can do that, there's a fairground there. But that would have been the ideal solution several years ago, so it'd only been a four-way or less because of the signals. But we've been working on this for several years. I've been able to help get some funding through earmarks that are no longer around. But we, I believe, were about into the nine, ten million dollar number with three million for this and six million for the Phase 1A. So at the time, we started looking at this, I think we were looking at twenty-five or under thirty million, and I think now it's at forty-five roughly. So to answer Sue's question, these projects take a long time to fund. It's like eating an elephant. You better do it a bite at a time because you're not going to be able to sit down on one meal and eat an elephant, unless you got a big darn crowd. So, you know, again, consider it that, that type of project. I'm just glad to see, in looking at the numbers, by adding the second roundabout at Low-High Way, we save about a million and a half to two million dollars based on current projections. And we improve traffic flow and eliminate signals at High Low, Fornie and, In-N-Out, if you will. Fornie at In-N-Out. And we end up with two nice roundabouts there and smooth traffic flow through that area. I may not be around to enjoy it, but I'm sure glad that I had, was able to say something about that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkins?
Well, I'm sorry, what's your name, Mr. McGrady? Mr. McGrady, sorry. You did have a really good presentation. You're a really good roundabout salesman. That's my opinion. I had a question, oh, it's not a question, it's an observation. With, it was the difference in the staff report saying that, okay, the roundabout at High Low, at Low-Hi will have superior operating characteristics as compared with the signal currently in the project. But it's not far superior because out of the twelve, there's only three that are approved, and it's not really by that much, it's one grade. But that's just that. And then in their conclusion, it said, it's about the same. And that, and in the doc in page, paragraph two to the city engineer, it's just said the rideaway impacts and costs of the roundabout are similar to the signal. So in reading all of this, and I got the, the full traffic report, and I read all of that too, but it just doesn't seem, like I said, that was an awesome presentation. And if that's all we heard, it would be like, whoa, we need seven of these right now. But, and also the comment, I'm sorry.
Good observation. You remember the, the, the table that you were looking at? All of that analysis is done with the visim model, both the signal and the roundabout. I'm not sure if you have available for them. Since then, I, I went and I did, I did the analysis with my calibrated model, you know, having backchecked it against field conditions and, and duplicating what I see in the ground. And in that case, the roundabout does much better than the traffic signal. And I'm sure that Nate and all can get you those numbers.
So let's hope there's not another new improved model in a couple of years that would have different results. I'm just saying, that's all.
That's fine, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm the biggest skeptic that-
Anyway, and, and then I was also, I know this is a completely different thing. I mean, the public, sometimes we talk about roundabouts and everybody wants to put in their two cents. Sometimes they might not even know, or they don't care, or they like this, whatever. But I just wanted to make that point. When you said, when the city gets their first roundabout, and it's like, this is just my, this is just coming to me? So we have a small one at Lihoe, High, Low-Hi, and then we have another one, and then it's okay. And then we have another bigger one, and then dun, dun, dun. You know what I'm saying? That's just-
The real key there is that the public does not distinguish between a good design and a poor design. And like the, when we referred to Woodinville, Reed Middleton didn't design those. And a couple of those entrances are too straight and too fast. So they just think a roundabout is a roundabout. So this is, you, you want your first roundabout to do two things for you. You want it to be a trophy. It has to work great, otherwise you're not going to get any more.
So we're going to get the good roundabout.
And, and secondly, you want it to be at an intersection that people are griping about. It's, it's lovely when you put it in there and, oh, this is, this is nice.
All that said, I'm not saying that I hate this, I just wanted to get it out what was on my chest.
Thank you. Councilmember Borelli?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, do you mind if I, the, the details, I don't know that you were all provided, and that's, that's my fault, with the, the full traffic study. I do know that, that Tricia asked for it, and she obtained it. Within that traffic study, Table Three was provided to you on Attachment Four, and it shows the levels of service at the various intersections. And so this is what she's referring to, that at that intersection, Placerville Drive-Fair Lane, we see, you know, current level of service F with the signals, level of service C in the AM and the PM. And with the roundabout, you go to A in the AM, but you're still at C in the PM. So, you know, what, what's the benefit there? This simulation was done, as Patrick mentioned, with the visim simulator, which I'm not an expert on that, and he could elaborate more if needed. But there, there, a simulator that's more geared toward working with roundabouts is Sidra. I think it was developed in Australia, is that? So using that simulator, this is Table Four, which was not provided to you, so that's why I want to show it to you now. You see at that same intersection, there's the A and C from up above in visim, and then A and B using Sidra. And that's an eleven-second delay versus seventeen with visim and twenty-four with the signals. So I just wanted to point out, there's a significant improvement over the signals.
Thank you for that clarity, Nate, appreciate it. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, I'm not an engineer and I'm not a roundabout specialist, but I was impressed with everything I heard tonight. And I, too, remember, as Carl does, all the planning. I am on the Transportation Commission, and I know what, you know, what we have seen about all the projects that we go after. And it just seems to me that this just is the answer to all our problems that we do have on Placerville Drive and Fornie Road and everything. And I, I just can't see that there would be any objection.
Thank you. Councilmember Patton?
I would also like to thank Mr. McGrady for an awesome presentation and the words that you used and the phrases. I had to write down gap acceptance because I think that's a great phrase. But I wanted to just say that transportation, planning, and programming, as my fellow counselors have said, councilmen have said, is, takes so long, I mean, twenty-five years. And we still don't have it. I mean, I was on the Planning Commission, and we were doing Placerville Drive visioning sessions. And, you know, people said to me, why do you do this? And I said, because if you don't do it now, you, twenty years from now, when they go to build it, whatever you were thinking then isn't going to be in the plan. And so it's important that we hear from everyone about what is important to them today. I'm glad this is a terrible intersection today. It's terrible. And whoever is doing the signals, I don't know, I, it, it seems like it's changed in the last six months since the project, the off-ramp has changed. Because there's lights that are green, that there's nobody there. So, I mean, I'm glad that it's a crappy intersection. Whether it gets built in my lifetime, it might be built in my grandson's lifetime, but that's okay because that's what we do. That's what you do when you govern and you work in a jurisdiction like we have. And I'm grateful for people like Liz Diamond that's out there making sense of all of it. And then Mr. McGrady, who makes me laugh when he talks about engineering and roundabouts because they have been sensitive in our community. And there are going to be people, I, I know that there will be people that will object to it just because. So I'm glad, I also appreciate that staff is putting in the preparation of a supplemental EIR because that one stung really bad the last time. So I appreciate that, I appreciate the work you've done on this, Nate. And I say, let's vote for it.
Excellent. All right, thank you. I agree with everyone said, at this late date, I move that we adopt a resolution for the following action: By authorizing the preparation of a supplemental EIR, approve Amendment One to Authorization Number Four, and request the Eldredo County Transportation Committer, Commission consider an action to reprogram STIP funds currently programmed to the westbound off-ramp, to the eastbound off-ramp, the same over crossing.
Second.
And do we need a roll call vote?
It's closed.
No, we don't. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And once again, we thank you for your excellent presentation, your excellent work on this, on this issue. Look forward to moving that forward.
And we reserve the right to bring Mr. McGrady back when we have a public debate.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, councilmember reports. Vice Mayor Hagan, we'll start with you.
I think this month has been, this last two weeks has been the Hangtown Haven Incorporated City-County Dog, Dog and Pony Show. So on the fourth, we had meetings for that. That was most of it, and today, spent three or four hours with the county. On the fifth, SECOG Transportation Committee, we looked at reprogramming some particular projects because that's what you do at this time of the year. You reprogram them so that the funding can be spent in the appropriate federal calendar year. So that was pretty much it at SECOG. That's, I have a SECOG meeting next, next week also in Sacramento.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkins?
Well, I hurt my neck, so I wasn't doing too much. But I just wanted to say, and I wish that we could have had some of these back there. These, I got this set home. Yes, oh my gosh. This was set home, my, with my son, he's in kindergarten. And I was just looking through it, and I'm ashamed to say, I didn't know how awesome this is and what, like, the extent. I knew there was school stuff, I've taken ballroom dancing here before. But I joined the Hangtown Table Tennis Club, and it is the most fun you can have. It's forty dollars a month. It's four hours a week, it's two days a week. What can you do for forty bucks twice a week for an entire month? You go up there and you can play ping pong, and it's got a, we have a really cool instructor, Roy, and he's, he, it's fun, but you're learning, you're, you're, I'm getting better, I mean, you know. And there's a lot of stuff in here, like, there's like the little kids dance, and it's just really, it's so cheap, it's reasonable. Like, the, the toddler dancing, it's like two hours, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just, this is how I work, is like, it's like two hours a week for thirty-eight dollars when I send my daughter, and I had sent her up, it's like fifty-eight dollars for forty-five minutes a week. It's like, okay, well, anyway, I think we should have these back there. Can we do that? And people can pick them up? Yeah, well, I mean-
Put them up there, great idea.
At our, at our meetings. It's just fun. I mean, it's just fun.
Thank you for that reminder. Excellent. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, I went to, we called it a hail and farewell. Over at SEDCOR, we said adieu to Brent and welcomed Randy. And then the following few days later, I went back to SEDCOR again. I'm really learning that road to Auburn, I'm going to tell you. But we had our first meeting with Randy presiding. We had a couple of really good speakers, and I'm really looking forward to a good year. We, I think a lot of really good- We, I think a lot of really good suggestions to help with our county and Randy want, or I mean, our city and, well, county and city, and Randy wants to come over here and meet with everyone, and here are your, some of your suggestions. I also attended the Board of Supervisor meeting today and heard the presentation on our homeless issue. Wendy and Carl did a really good job. And the good news that we got was that the Weber Creek Bike Way path issue has been settled and solved, right, Nate? And we're going forward, so it's going to happen.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Patton?
I haven't been doing too much, but, because, for whatever reason, the committees I'm on were on vacation. But I did want to take a little brief moment also to recognize September eleventh, and I remember very well, Mayor Salazar was in office at the time, and it was maybe four or five days afterwards. Remember, all the planes were down, and there was no airplanes going anywhere, and Salazar called for a community prayer at the bell tower. And so, we gathered around, and we held hands, some people held hands, and, and Mayor Salazar led everyone in prayer. And honestly, I, I got goosebumps right now. Three airplanes came from, I think from Salt Lake City region, and came towards the west coast almost on cue when Salazar was saying amen, and it was the most moving moment for me. It was also a time, my mother passed away eleven years, eleven days after September eleventh of that same year. So, it's a kind of an emotional time, but I just wanted to remind everyone that that's what it means. This community is getting together, people of different faith or people of no faith at all, and, and saying a prayer for our country and believing that it's going to be better. And I just, I was grateful to be there, and I'm grateful to be here tonight.
Thank you, thank you. And I know it's really late, I thank everyone for their patience on this, but would just like to briefly report that we had a wonderful meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Our forty-minute workshop turned out to about a two-and-a-half-hour workshop. And what was, I, I have to thank Vice Mayor Hagan. He's been in this issue doggedly with me for the last couple of months, and I just really, really appreciate your support on this. The bottom line is that the Board of Supervisors, their conversation changed. We had full support for the concept of a transitional living center, and there wasn't anyone in the audience that spoke today that didn't approve of that. Even the people that were against, they were against that specific site for, for good reasons. And there will never be a site that has a hundred percent acceptance, never, and we recognize that. But there was a hundred percent acceptance for the concept, which was huge. And I, I give great gratitude to the Board of Supervisors for being so responsive to that. At the end of the day, Chairman Briggs, who has been dead-set against this concept, suggested that we maybe just don't need a, for the city to, to handle it, but they need a, a policy change at the Board of Supervisors level, which is huge. So, I'm cautiously optimistic, and what the board authorized is to create an interagency task force, keeping in full, full mind the deadline that we are coming up against. They are very cognizant of that, but they are creating an interagency task force that will report back to the Board of Supervisors the end of October, first week in November, about specifically Perks Court, what are the options, what are the ramifications of that site? What are other county sites that are doable, that perhaps maybe need to be rezoned? And working with the city in a very collaborative way to find maybe a more permanent home for a transitional living center for, for Placerville and Eldorado County. So, it was a good day, and, and I am very appreciative of that, so we, we march on, so. All right, with that, city manager and staff reports. All right, and with that, we will adjourn the next item, next council meeting is September twenty-fourth, 2013. It will start at 5:00 PM closed session, 6:00 PM regular session, and with that, good night, everybody.